Are we all set? Thank you. Good evening, people. It is now seven o'clock. This is the planning board. It is January 11th, 2018. Where does the town go? So, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seven o'clock, the continued public hearing. Major site plan administrative review. Seven to nine Marshfield Avenue. Gentlemen.
Is this angle okay for you?
Yes, sir. Can it be seen on TV? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. John Aida, on behalf of Homarock Seafood, ELSI, and Stephen Lehman. First of all, Happy New Year. Last week here, we were, had an application for a site plan waiver on another matter relating to the same property. But we are back on board on the original application, which was the major administrative site plan review, that being in relation to a restaurant with, in bar with 28 seats. So just to make sure we're on the same page. We've had, I think, two, two private meetings specifically regarding the major site plan administrative review. I don't want to rehash.
Yes, but that would be great.
Sorry about that.
You don't.
I don't want to rehash everything. I want to just address the concerns of this board and also any comments the public may have had. I think just, just real briefly by way of background, just to get everyone on the same page, the site we're talking about is seven to nine Marshfield Avenue down in Homarock. It consists of a two-story building, 6,000 square feet on each floor. The first floor consists of retail space, 400 square feet, a warehouse of 4,600 square feet, and a proposed restaurant and bar of the first front, 1,000 square feet. The expansion sought is from the, there was an existing kitchen. That's how it stemmed Mr. Lehman's application. He wanted to expand into a full restaurant and bar. The only exterior changes would be the proposed deck, which is 16 feet by 20 feet deck, which would, facing the building is on the left-hand side of that. The entrance and exit would be through the restaurant. There would be obviously a way, a means of egress off the deck for emergency purposes. It's located in the general business district. And the request is, you know, to operate a restaurant is a change of use at that site. So it's a permitted use as a right in the general business district. On-site, there are 25 parking spaces as shown on the plan. What is required based on the calculations on its current use and proposed use are 28 spaces. I think it's important to note that the 28 spaces are based on its full potential and full occupancy. I think it's, it's important to, for this board to understand the history of the site as well in this building. And traditionally, Mr. Lehman's been a tenant for approximately five years. He's had the entire first floor, which consists of 6,000 square feet. The second floor, which consists of, again, 6,000 square feet of office and warehouse, has not been leased or rented in the 14 years since the current owner has purchased the property or owned the property. What I'm getting at is, I think, important to stress is that the use is underutilized as it is. The parking does have to be taken into consideration at its maximum use and capacity. But I think the board can't neglect the fact that Mr. Lehman has been the only tenant here for the last five years in a similar operation prior to that. And at any given time, there's been maybe only use of four or five parking spaces. The 28-seat restaurant as proposed requires seven parking spaces. And again, that's what precipitates the major administrative site plan review. And even taking that into consideration, I think you're dealing with something that it's not going to be an impact on the neighborhood in light of the fact of its usage. And it's, you know, it's, it's, I mean, the traditional uses and its current uses. I mean, it just hasn't been an issue down there with, with parking and being a burden on that. That being said, based on its full use and full requirements, there'd be three spaces that would need to be made up somewhere else. Because he's in the general business district, that would be on the, you know, on-street parking and the use that he has, the right to use that and avail himself of the on-street parking. A waiver, which was sought both for parking and for the site plan waiver sought, it could also be, and I would ask that the board consider that as well, based on the non-peak times or different demand times of the businesses down there. A lot of the businesses do close up traditionally on, you know, five, six o'clock. Mr. Lehman, in a restaurant business, obviously, things would pick up after that time. And I think there's different peak demand times which would precipitate the request for a waiver of those three spaces. And I think it's certainly reasonable to expect that. It's a seasonal location anyways. You have, you know, very peak, high peak demand times in the summer for approximately 10 weeks. And, you know, unfortunately, this time of year, it's very slow down there. So that has to be taken into consideration in terms of the parking and the constraints and its usages and demands on the, on the residents. The, some of the parking concerns were brought up both by, I think, this board and the, some of the, the public. One was the traffic flow. We provided a plan that shows a one-way traffic flow. So traffic would enter in from Marshfield Avenue and exit on Central. The one-way dimensions of space, the minimum requirement would be about 10 feet. We have over 12 feet between parking spaces as shown on that plan. Each space meets the requirements of the board. In terms of a couple of the comments and questions about the layout and the dimensions, the obstacles that were mentioned or brought up in terms of along the building, the parking spaces have been jogged out, so that should no longer be an issue. There are planters there as it is, and therefore, the parking is not going to be right up against the building. So the current site plan shows that parking out there so that the individuals can obviously open their car doors and the like. The parking, which has been considered parallel, you know, the parallel parking, which is drawn on the left and right-hand sides of that main driveway, you know, Attorney De Lisi referenced it and called it the Wild West. I think it's no different than any other street parking. It's parallel parking. It's no different than outside of Town Hall. I did it tonight, and I had no problems. In fact, I measured the parking spaces out front of Town Hall, and they're quite under the required 162 square feet. They're actually coming in at about 142 square feet. So what I'm saying is, people are used to parking where they can park. They're used to having different dimensions. They're faced with parking on, on-street parking, which is parallel parking. And if they're given the choice of parking in a private parking lot to do the same, I think they'll try to do that. In terms of the concerns about backing up into traffic, Mr. Lehman has spoken to the police chief, and I'll get into that in a second. But it's no different than parking and backing up into any parking spot, whether you're in your own driveway, if you're at a supermarket. It's just the way it is. You park into a parking spot, you have to back up. You have to be cautious about backing into that. There's no difference. Mr. Lehman spoke to the police chief earlier today, and he said there's no evidence to show that backing up into traffic leads to any more accidents. It's just the way it is down there in that part of town and other parts of town. It's just something that people do every day in and out. And I don't think it's an impediment or a concern, or it certainly does not lead it to be any more, you know, problematic for parking. It's just, it's just the way it is. Most people pulling in out of parking spaces, back out of parking spaces as it is on a daily basis. It's, there's nothing to, to be of concern. Steve also checked in with the deputy chief of the fire department, who had his concerns as well initially. Some of those concerns referenced, you know, the neighboring boatyard and the boat concerns. Obviously, you know, I think he corrected that to say it's not Steve's issue, it's just an overall issue of that there's a lot of boats down there on the, on the neighboring lots. The traffic flow was discussed. Mr. Lehman actually owns a fire engine. He submitted some pictures to the board. I don't know if you had an opportunity to review those or not. It shows a full fire engine with cars parked on either side accessing through that. I think the minimum requirements might be eight and a half feet or eight feet, Steve, for a fire engine to get through. And again, we have more than adequate room for that, for that purpose. And so not only did we just, you know, take the, the fire chief's word that it's fine, Mr. Lehman actually had the ability to test it out on his own and provided pictures of that. The pri, privacy fence was installed along the left-hand side. That's, actually has been done. That's blocking off the HVAC systems and some of the exterior stuff. So that's a big improvement, even though it's a small improvement. It's, it's a big improvement in terms of ISO from the street. And the intention is Mr. Lehman, you know, does want to beautify and add some things to the front and along the side with the planters as well. There's concerns about the parking spaces, I guess, and the, and the lack of lines. Obviously, that's something that Mr. Lehman can't just take upon himself. So if the board is looking to have those lines installed and striped, I should say, then that's obviously something that he's wanting to, you know, accommodate the board with. As for out front, the intention was to keep it either stone or seashells and have the granite, you know, bumper stops, and he's wanting to do that as well. And I think it would look better aesthetically than just asphalt all around. But again, that's up to the, to the board to, to consider. Finally, the, the big concern, I guess, or the only concern exterior that was new was the proposed deck. And there was a rendering, a couple of renderings issued and offered on the site plan, as well as a slight rendering 3D there, which shows the detail of the deck. There's some comments about PVC railings and a Trex type, which is a composite decking. I think it just makes sense to have that.
Is this deck just for smoking?
It's not for smoking. It's an overflow deck. If people want to go out and have a smoke, then they can do that.
But is it a deck that will enable people to go out, have a cigarette, and drink? Are they going to be drinking on the deck?
If they choose to. If they choose to take their drink with them, yes.
It's not going to be a, it's not like a social deck that's an expansion of it. It's literally if they're having a cigarette and they have a drink, they don't have to keep it inside.
Because it's my understanding that your liquor license application indicates that that is part of the restaurant and will be utilized.
There's no seating. There's no seating.
Right. But we're required. Anywhere that alcohol is, we're required to put that on the floor plan. So we'd be remiss if we didn't put the deck down. If someone, because you get in turn the minute someone walks off-site with something in their hands or a drink, I mean, that's the first violation someone looks for. So if we didn't put that and someone happened to walk out with a drink in their hands, Steve would be in front of that, the board of selectmen for that issue. So we did put that on to overall encompass the.
Is there a gate or anything on the deck?
There will be a, the railing.
It'd be an emergency gate in case somebody had to get out.
Is that what you mean by gate?
Yes.
Yes, there will be an exit off the, the deck.
The graphic illustration seems, seems to show that there's an opening from the deck to the parking area.
Yeah, that'll be a gate, yeah.
Well, then the graphic illustration needs to show that there's a gate there.
And then people can.
Because that's a big concern.
Right. People can then exit and enter through that gate.
Well, there has to be a way of egress there, so.
I understand. But then again, you have, unless you have a bouncer at that gate, you cannot prevent people from leaving with a drink.
Well, right. They're not going to leave off-site. I mean.
You're missing my point, but that's okay.
Okay.
All right. You know, as far as what we have here, I have nothing in writing from the fire chief Elliot. It's all verbal. Nothing from the police chief is verbal. I want it in writing. We need something from the board of health in writing. We don't have it. Design review has not had an opportunity to look at this. Traffic rules and regulations has not looked at this. There are some real unanswered issues here, as well as where the dumpster's going to go, how that's going to be accessed with this parking when the people who, the servers or whomever park out back, they could be landlocked, if you will, by cars, and they would be unable to get out. So I'm going to open this up at this moment to first Karen, the town planner?
All right. So I did speak with, I spoke with Al Elliott the other day, and based on the capacity of the restaurant, there has to be two means of egress. So one of them would be the front door, and one of them is the access, the double doors from the restaurant to the deck. I didn't specifically ask him about closing off the deck, but it needs two means of egress. He was concerned about that, and which it has. He was also concerned where the fire department connection is. So that needs to be shown on the plan so that we can verify that there's no parking there. He was okay with the 14 feet, four feet for circulation, and a fire truck can get through there. But we are going to need signage so that a one-way traffic flow is shown. And signage is not shown anywhere. Bumper stops are going to need to be put on all the parking spaces out front to minimally demarcate the, where the parking is. Hours of operation, nothing said about hours of operation. How is the trash going to be handled? Is it going to be handled through the restaurant, out the back, and then to the loading dock? It's very clear, because a truck cannot get around to the back. The board of health has not commented. The elevations need to show that the existing stair on the outside, if that's going to remain in the front of the building, the elevation should show what's really there. The, the bylaw is specific to say existing and proposed elevations. I didn't have time to set up a design review committee meeting because I only got the information this week. Did you pursue an easement from Humming Rock Gifts? Yes, they said that they have agreed to give, you have a land connection. But I believe the board asked you for pursuing an easement, showing where the doors are so we know how things can be handled, lighting. And I think the board expressed they were concerned about safe pedestrian circulation.
Thank you.
Could I address any of those, or do you want me to?
Let's see what the board has to say.
Okay. I feel like I've been given half an opportunity to talk here, because I had stuff to mention about the dumpster as well. And, and I guess your comments on the boards is, it's the duty of the boards to present issues they have with you. I think you haven't heard from them, because it's been Mr. Lehman's personal experience when he's gone to these boards, that they don't have overall issues. And it's not for us. We've, we've been trying to pursue and actually get them to put something in writing. No one's done that and won't do that. So I don't know that you're going to get those answers. The, the fire department issues were resolved. I think these things are very minor issues. We certainly agreed to do most, if any of them. In terms of the, you know, dumpster, we have a plan in place. It's going to be, it's not going to be a full dumpster. It'll be, Trash Pals, he has a contract and an email that we presented with an agreement in place that they'll be emptied daily or whatever is needed to, to be emptied. The hours of operation, I mean, we've been, I think, we've verbally informed you, I don't know where else we could put that on, on the application, but we've certainly presented to the board of selectmen that the hours of operation would be a certain time, 11:00 AM till, till 12:00 PM. And in terms of the, you know, again, hearing from the boards, unanswered questions, I think we've actually been going through that process. So I'll hear more from the board, and I guess I can circle back around.
Ben?
I think at this time, it seemed, there's, obviously, you just heard a laundry list of different things that we're looking input on. But for me personally, I'd say my biggest concerns at this point are safe pedestrian access along Marshfield Avenue where the head-in parking spots are. It appears that, or not it appears, there's a, there's a sidewalk that comes over the bridge, and then there's also, looks like another sidewalk improvement was put in at some point at the corner there with Central Ave and Marshfield Ave. So the only kind of non-sidewalk pedestrian areas in front of the restaurant and the driveway and the parking. So I'm just kind of curious, or a little bit concerned with safety issues of cars backing in and out, and whether pedestrians would kind of, if that creates a safety hazard or if they're going to have to cross the street, if, if the flow of pedestrian traffic is more leaning towards crossing the street, should an additional crosswalk be, be painted there to go to the other side of the road? That's something that I would like a little more info on. And, and then the other big concern I have is just in terms of the outdoor deck, and given the fact that even though it's general business district, there are a lot of surrounding, not only other businesses but residential neighbors. And I just want to kind of get a little bit of an indication of what sort of level of noise or kind of activity might be going on in that deck, just because it might kind of change the, what's, what the feel of the neighborhood is, you know, with this addition of this new restaurant and bar.
So I think, first of all, the noise issue, first of all, with any outdoor area, I'm not going to call it seating, because it's not seating, it's going to be seasonal anyways. So it's going to be limited in that aspect. If in the wintertime, someone wants to go and have a smoke, it's going to be probably one or two individuals at a time. It's not going to be a situation where there's going to be a lot of noise. In the summertime, where obviously he hopes to be, he hopes to be busy all year round, but with the deck, it's going to be limited, obviously, mostly to, to summer and the nice weather, it, it's something that he's going to be aware of. Mr. Lehman's used to running a restaurant, he has in the past, that had 320 seats. People are in and out all the time. And so with a smaller thing, he's going to be able to stay on top of that more often. The staff's going to be able to stay on top of it. It's not going to be, you know, a loud gathering area. It's, it's a, you know, moderately sized deck at 16 by 20, and it's really something that he's going to have to, you know, address with the patrons and see how it goes. It's not, there's no piped in music, there's no entertainment out there. It's literally, you know, a patron going out there or a waiting area until they can be sat for, for dinner. And just, just like a, you know, if there's a patio, I think he wouldn't, again, it's not, it's not a situation where it's going to have tons of people out there making noise and drinking and things like that. It's not, and it's not an outdoor bar, you know. That's not what he's looking for. In terms of the, the safety to the pedestrians, obviously, that's paramount. But I think here, there's quite a bit of space between the street and the end of the parking spaces. The, I think there was a couple photos submitted. It's actually Mr. Lehman's own truck, which is a full-size truck. And there's still plenty of room behind that, in that sidewalk area before he even gets to the street. I'd venture to say it's actually a lot more than some of the other businesses down there. I mean, including, I mean, the post office is one that comes to mind, it's like right on the street. There's other businesses that are right on the street. There's still quite some areas. So the, the edge of the pavement here is actually all the way down here. So there's, there's quite a bit of distance there that you can pass, people can pass in both directions, even if there was a full-size truck, you know, parked there. The average sedan SUV, it's under 17 feet anyway, so it shouldn't be an issue. And like I mentioned prior, in the backing out and pulling in, people have to be aware. It's a busy place down there in the summertime. There's pedestrians everywhere down there. So I think just word of caution, once people get used to it, they're just going to have to take extra time and be careful pulling in and out. And, you know, that's, I think that would, you know, obviously, address that issue. There's a big gap, obviously, in the driveway until you get to the next sidewalk area, same thing. You have to just watch the flow coming. People will have to get used to that traffic pattern, one way in, one way out. And obviously, Mr. Lehman is willing to put whatever signage would be required to make people aware.
Thank you. Ben, are you all set?
Yeah, that's it for now.
Phil?
I'm going to talk for a minute, and if I lose my voice, doesn't mean that I've stopped thinking about this. One is pedestrian access. That's, that's very definitely a concern. I'm not, because I got moving cars, I got moving people. All right. I've got a real disconnect with the deck, right? The deck just seems to me to be a gathering place, and if that's a gathering place of people waiting to get a table, then in effect, I've got more people parking than I would have set up for the tables now. I have full tables, which would tell me that I'd have seven parking spaces. And I've got people on the deck waiting to come back in and fill them in. So I've got, at some point, I'm going to have more parking spaces than I, than I, than I'm projecting based on my seven, based on what you're telling me I'm going to use the deck for. I'm concerned about the deck in terms of it also becoming an entertainment. In other words, it'd be awfully easy to put a band out there or some sort of other entertainment. And I think that is not, this is not, shoe-horning this restaurant in this spot, doesn't lend itself to that kind of an activity. The, I had a question is, how, what is the access to the warehouse? Warehousing?
From the inside of the building, or?
Yeah. If I've got an 18-wheeler dropping you off a basket full of goodies, where do I put it? Where do I bring it into?
Well, there's a, there's a garage door down the other end, but we don't, we don't bring anything into 18-wheels anymore.
No.
Everything's just on my own, my own small trucks.
Okay. So there's going to be, based on the current use, there's going to be no truck, no trucks bringing stuff in and out of the storage? Okay. And I guess traffic rules and regulations, Karen?
They didn't have.
A quorum?
They didn't have a quorum, so they didn't, they weren't able to meet and discuss this last time. Supposedly, they're going to be meeting at the end of the month.
Okay. Okay. I contributed to not having a quorum. I'm going to tail end of a bug. So, but I definitely want to hear what that is. And the last point is that I wouldn't wait, until I know exactly what the uses are for the building, not projected uses, I wouldn't, wouldn't waiver any kind of parking requirements. So whatever is required, if it's a warehouse, I wouldn't waiver those. I wouldn't waiver any of the restaurants. So we don't expect a waiver from me to come back up and bring it down so that it doesn't have fun for out-front parking.
If I could address maybe the couple of concerns you had on the deck, I'd be lucky to do that. So in terms of the entertainment, Mr. Lehman is not applying for any entertainment, the deck or the restaurant. There's no intention for him to do so. It, it wouldn't make sense. You'd have every neighbor, I'm sure Mr. Maderos and others that would be up here or the selectmen's office indicating that they are against any outdoor entertainment. Separate application would have to be filed, and it's not Mr. Lehman's intention to ever do so. It's not going to be a loud, rowdy place. In terms of the people waiting, that's just a natural part of a restaurant. The factor of the seven spaces per seats, that takes into account people waiting around to be, to be sat, takes into account staff, it takes into account everything. It's no different here. If it was a hu, you know, a deck that was twice the size or three times the size, it still wouldn't affect the parking. It's just the way that the statute's set up and the regulations are set up. So if there are people waiting, that's what Mr. Lehman hopes. He hopes there are people waiting to go. At the same time, people will drop on, they'll pick up food, they'll take it home, people come by foot all the time. And he expects in the summertime, most to be coming from the arena or from the beach. That's just the traffic that's down there. The, the patrons that are down there, a lot of them are on foot. It's just the way of life is down there. It doesn't, again, Mr. Lehman's experience the last five years is, the site's underutilized. It's not going to be an issue with parking. For the waiver, the only reason, again, you have to take into account that Mr. Lehman on, you know, historically speaking, has only used about four or five spaces. So if you, even if you have more than seven required, there's 11 spaces, is more than adequate down there. The board does have to consider its full maximum use, and that's what you're doing. But at the same time, you have to be realistic and not shut off the fact of what his actual present use is, and Mr. Lehman is the only tenant right there and has been for the last, you know, or similar operation for the last 14 years. So I, I think is a, there's a more than adequate parking onsite. The fact that some sites maybe needed to be utilized, excuse me, on-street, that's, that's typical. That's what the general business district allows for. And some people might prefer it. They might prefer to park on the street. The parking has been recently up, you know, up to two hours there now. And so someone may be willing to take advantage of that and go out and sit down, have a, have a meal, not feel that they're going to rush out and move their car within an hour or so. In terms of, again, I think you talked about the traffic rules and regulations. Again, yeah, Mr. Lehman, you know, looked into that as well. There was no quorum. But speaking with the police chief, you know, he had his concerns, mentioned it, talking to the deputy fire chief as well. Both important individuals in terms of dealing with traffic issues and concerns. And he got the overall impression that, you know, again, that it's not overtly more dangerous or inherently prohibitive to have the business down here and have the parking the way it is down here. They, they did review the plan and looked at it. And, and I'd venture to say, if they had a flat-out prohibition or concerns about it, I think that certainly would have alerted to the board. I mean, this application's been kicking around since July, maybe August or so. So the board's had adequate time, and the different boards have had adequate time to express their concerns about this. I think the re- And I think the reason you're not hearing it is because they don't feel it does impact safety.
Are you all set?
Yeah, I'm, I'm all set.
Okay. Richard?
Well, I do think for the other boards and for the police chief and the fire, we have had letters in the past where they've said, you know, this is all okay, we have no issues with it. So I do think it does need to be in writing, that's sort of concern number one. And so I just wanted to ask, the plan that we have before us now, I just want to make sure I understand the differences. So what I see on this plan that was different than what was submitted before was that the, as you said, the parking spaces on the right-hand side of the building, which would be the easterly, yeah, east side, those have been moved off the building-
Drawn up.
-a little bit. And I see the, the arrows for the one-way, which again, I, I was, Karen brought that up, and several others, that would need to be, have signage. So are those the main things that are different? I didn't see anything-
Yours have, uh, on the, sorry, on the far west, on the, near the property line in the back, do you propose dumpster?
Yeah, how would that work? Because I'm looking at the picture for the privacy fence and it's completely now surrounded. So how do you get to that dumpster?
Yeah, so there's access from inside the-
Yeah, right. Right on the corner, there's a four-foot gate, which a small dumpster or barrels can be removed from. I've had a dumpster company there.
And then so they would go through the, the warehouse then, over to the loading pad or the, the loading dock?
Yes. So they wouldn't be going anywhere, yeah, through the restaurant or accessing that or anywhere. So it's actually all behind the scenes, kind of, and Mr. Lehman has access to that full first floor. And as he spoke to the, the different refuse companies, I think it became the plan on, based on the size of seats and everything else and the use, actually, he thinks he can get away with a couple of the larger barrels versus a, having a full dumpster needed to be onsite and whether it's a daily emptying or-
Yeah, they pick up, they can pick up six days a week if I need.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, in, in very conceptual generalities, I, I don't have per se issues with the parking in the sense of the, the use, but I think it needs to all be written down for us and approved and the reg-, uh, the rules and regulations, the traffic rules and regulations committee and those types of things.
Yeah, and to that end, again, you know, we've been trying to get them to do it-
Yeah, I know that.
And it's been, you know, it's, it's not, the burden really shouldn't be on us so much as, you know, and it's just the way it is. But, you know, I don't want the board to hold against it that we don't have these letters from these departments when it's, you know, the board puts out, hey, give us your comments, give us your concerns, and we've been waiting as well for months. So it's, um, it's tough on that end, on our end and, you know, I, I don't think anyone wants to see this being dragged out further and further, but I understand your concern.
And one last thing is that I see on here on the plan, it's 13.5 feet, and that's where you're saying that the fire department says that that's fine to get a fire truck between those two parking spaces, basically if there are two cars there.
Right, assuming the car, again, is parked, yeah, absolutely, if the car's parked in the extreme end of that spot per se, then it's still within the accessible or passable width.
Okay, because even in the pictures, it looks pretty tight.
I mean, he wants 14 feet. Yeah, I had a conversation with the deputy chief the other day, he wants 14 feet. And on the first plan, the unstamped plan, it was labeled 14 feet, four inches. That's what I showed him. So is it now changed on the new plan?
The plan shows 13 foot, five inches.
Because the parking sites, uh, parking had to be updated to, to jog it out from the wall a little bit more, so.
Weren't you supposed to take out that cement?
Well, it, it's part of the, I think it's part of the foundation.
Yeah, it's not, it's, it's protecting, the reason that was there is behind that, they used to store, there's a small little fence and that's where the electrical is. So that was a buffer.
So the sites go out a little bit progressively more where it opens up, so that remains there and it's just not an impediment to the, to the parking.
And that's actually where the, the hookups for the sprinkle system are, right there.
Are you all set, Richard?
Yes.
Howdy.
Well, my concern, piggybacking Mr. Limbark, is which has to do with the deck, and you keep talking about parking spaces, and then you talk about blocking traffic.
The bulk of the traffic in the summertime is on foot. It comes from the arena.
So what is your capacity for inside your restaurant?
Twenty-eight seats.
And I'm going to assume if we have so much traffic, there's going to be more than 28 people inside that, including the outside deck?
Well, you'll have- There could be people waiting, yes.
You'll have an occupancy permit as well, which is obviously greater than your seating capacity. So that's determined by, you know, calculations on the square footage and everything else.
Do you know what that is?
We don't know yet, no. We haven't, I mean, the, they'd have to make the determination, but-
It depends on the number of accesses too. I had a conversation with the building inspector regarding that today. And depending on the number of accesses, they, on the actual permit, they can limit the occupancy. If there's two accesses, it can be 50. If it's less than two, it'll be below that.
Yeah, Neil had mentioned to me a couple of years ago when I first looked into this, he said it would be about 48 or 50.
Because that would be my concern, is that we're going to have an overcrowding, there's going to be an accident due to that, which is going to be too many people inside the building. And also, shoe-horning on that is that we have a building that you're looking to make a use out of, and so you've decided to make a restaurant out of it. I mean, and that's your purview to do that. I don't have any issue with the parking. I back out all the time into North Central, I'm still more concerned about foot traffic and how many people will be in the building in and around, pretty low access off that deck. That's my only concern.
All right, this is a public hearing, so I will open it up to the public. Yes, sir?
I'm Bill R. Berger. I'm here with Stephen Dale's and the manager of property across the street. And just a couple comments, but the outside of it, just at least my experience in comparing him, comparing him for the boards is with the various subways. And the stands, we've always been held to, new information is submitted, whether the applicable committee of board spends adequate time, review of hold of him and whatnot. So I don't think, the board's been holding us up, but just right out of the gate, the first thing as I see is the revised plans was received, I think yesterday or the day before. I see there is, so I don't know how people could give commentary on that. The other thing is I see is a letter from the board of health in, in September, excuse me, in November, and there's a response dated January 4th to her, because she said that she didn't consider the, the septic adequate back in November 17th, because the engineer responded on January 4th. And also, I see Mr. Lehman with the, you know, design review committee just submitted something, or at least the date of the letter is January 4th also. So I understand that they have to work, these committees have to work through a process of that. Although the traffic rules and regs didn't have a quorum, there was commentary, because actually my partner, Jeff Lees, who was there, and one of the, and it would be fully vetted, but one, one of the primary concerns is these parking spaces out front is, you know, the fact they encroach into the street, it's the worry about pedestrian bike traffic, and that really is the focus of coming onto Hemrock. One of the other things, we actually had discussion with one of the former members of the, of the, of the commission on disabilities, and one of the things that he pointed out to us is that all the new vans, and that's where the handicap spots are, have rear access for wheelchair ramps coming off of them. And so that's something that if we get to, because this really hasn't demonstrated handicap accessibility here, but if that's where you're locating the handicap spots, if the plan is, is to lower a ramp into the public way, into oncoming traffic, that's something definitely the commission on disability would look at. But to get back to the, the central core issue here is having with the parking. And the parking, which I just discussed, you know, is into the street, it encroaches into the street. If you are actually parking in the street, traffic rules and regs have to look at that. The selectmen are the only ones who can authorize a modification of parking to allow for parking in a public way. In addition to that, and I did hear discussion about, and as the, as the town planner said, one of the fundamental things this board asked for was where's an easement that shows this parking? Half the parking on this is in, is in permanent parking. In addition to that, the issues I understand, when you have a gravel lot and you don't get clearly, you know, spots in the demarc, which are very obviously difficult, that parking number does, does squish up in itself also. Then, then the issue is if you're up against the fence or you're up against the, against the building and all of that. One of the other things, but to get back to the deck, when I say one of the selectmen's meetings, one of the issues is, is a real issue here. Literally two feet from that property line, there's shrink ground posts. That's highly flammable. All you need to do is film a flick of cigarette. And there's fuel stored there, there's all kinds of stuff, you can do a significant problem, which I don't think has been addressed. And I, I think from, as far as from a standpoint, if you're licensing the premises for alcoholic beverages, and you have to, there is no, 365 days a year, legally, that's where people can drink alcoholic beverages, socialize, whatever, albeit, the only thing they can't do is sit down unless they're in yoga position. In addition to that, we also have concerns, in the parking lot itself, there's no really direction for how to pedestrians navigate through traffic moving in the lot. Also, I do note that in the parking, a bylaw parking does require trees for certain shady spots, which I don't see those anyhow. Also, we really haven't talked about it all about, one of the things I do note in the lease, the lease that has been submitted, the landlord really has control over the exterior of the building. So one of the things I think that the board, that permit is going to be granted on this, is you have to get some clarification, because there's nothing that I can see that actually a tenant has the ability to do anything on the exterior of the building. So if there's any requirements or parking or exterior, such as the design review committee exterior facade changes, there really isn't any mechanism to deal with that either. Lighting, particularly, Mr. Maderos has a tenant on the second floor residential use across the street, so obviously we'd like to know what is the lighting situation going to be here. I assume if you have, if you have exterior, patrons' exterior, there's got to be some, got to be some lighting related to it. Yeah, and Rich Tuzen also has tenants that, which is right back there also. Steve, I didn't know if you wanted to tell me anything, really, sure.
Sorry. All right, regarding the, the deck, there's been pictures showing it with a railing, where people can't step off, then now it shows it with the opening and stuff. But then in other pictures, they show that they're using that as parking as well, the parking's coming all the way over. So you're going to have an opening where cars pulling in and blocking, potentially the egress of people getting out of there. And I was told that if you're outside with an open container, you cannot be able to step off of that property, so there should not be steps going off from the deck onto the public way if people are going to be out there drinking and smoking. And that's what Mr. Lehman has said in every hearing that we've been at so far. Also, the, my concern is with the boatyard next door and the things being shrink wrapped, so you're going to have railings in a boat, which is like two feet away from you, where people can, if they're drinking, go on, try to jump on the boat and stuff. Also, regarding the dumpster and stuff, I used to own sans, and we had to have an oil disposal system, so we had a, like a dumpster type thing for the grease and everything to pour in, the old grease and stuff like that. None of that has been mentioned, because they're going to be doing seafood and frying fish. And the new pictures that they have shown, they show that there, when the exterior of the building, you're removing the staircase to beautify the outside of it, it looks like it's the same door that's there, so you have a door up there with no staircase coming down. But in none of the drawings does it show where that egress now is going to be on the building. So they're taking away an egress from the front of the building, but it doesn't show where it's going to be on the side of the building or how they're going to have access to upstairs. Yes. Regarding the parking, those spots are leaning into the public ways of, so it's bad enough now when people are trying to go down there, even if the fish truck, which is still there, is open and you have people in the line, people have to step out and go around. So now you're going to have cars that are on the public way, women who are men with carriages and stuff like that are going to have to go out into the street in order to get by there. And it is busy down there year-round. This thing that it's only busy in the summer is fiction. We don't, the salon is open most nights until eight or nine o'clock. We don't close at five o'clock like he's trying to lead everyone to believe. We're there till around nine.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, and time is of the essence here. So you know what we need from you.
I think I do.
I hope you do. And Karen will provide you with a laundry list of what we need from you. And, you know, we have to get this-
I don't think the laundry list is long to think. I think I've addressed quite a bit of that, but-
You have, but there are still other issues.
Every time we come, there's, there's, I'm not trying to be critical, but every time there's new and new lists, and you could, you could have a list of 10,000 requirements to do for any business. And we're trying to narrow it down and we're trying to be receptive as possible, certainly address, try to address each and every one of those.
Okay.
Um, if you read the requirements in the site plan review, section 770 of the zoning bylaw, that we're not elaborating any new requirements than have been elaborated upfront. The drawings never had some of this stuff on it. So what the board is looking for is the requirements in section 70 to be met in either drawing form or a letter. And that's all we're asking for. And that's what we ask for everybody.
Like, traffic studies is more than that? I mean, that's not, I'm just saying, you know, there's more things that have been asked and I can't control what some of the boards do.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I do understand.
We'll, we, we will answer every question as provided. That's all I can say.
But thing, this is like a moving target. And we really need to get this done and over with one way or the other. It has to be finished. So, that said, I have a suggested motion.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I'll reiterate, I don't think we're asking for anything that's the different each time. It's the same, same issues.
770, 770, it hasn't changed.
No. We have concerns, pedestrian, we have concerns, the deck, we have concerns, parking, we have, these concerns have not changed at all.
Well, I don't know how a letter's going to say how pedestrians are going to be safe. I mean, it's kind of common sense, a lot of the concerns people have about-
All right, but it has to do with parking in the front.
Right.
Okay? It has to do with that. You need to come up with, with some type of agreement with your next-door neighbor.
You've submitted that.
There's a letter.
There's a letter and the board, the board asked about an easement.
We don't need to have an easement, we don't need to have a easement to have permission. We could have a license, we could have a day-to-day use. We do not, and that's why I wanted to address some of these things that were brought up. But I guess I should address them now so I can narrow down the topics. We are not required to have an easement, we have a permission from the neighbor. We could have a day-to-day lease, we could, we don't need a lease.
Okay, but if, if she should decide to sell and move on, for you, you've got a problem.
I may, I may not.
But, all right.
She may have a problem.
We are out of time. Ben, please.
Unless they don't want to extend.
Hmm?
Unless they don't want to extend.
They won't, okay, if you don't want to extend, you can withdraw.
Who said we want? Did not want to extend.
No, I do, I do.
Didn't want to give someone the wrong impression, I didn't.
No, I just want to make sure that you have an option.
Okay. Move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the major site plan administrative review for seven through nine Marshfield Avenue until March 22nd, 2018 at 7:00 PM, and to continue the time for action for filing with the town clerk until April 6th, 2018. All information required for the continued hearing must be submitted by March 8th, 2018, or there will be an immediate continuance on March 22nd, 2018.
Is there a second?
Sure.
It's above the date. I'm going to be out, I'm going to be out of time for 10 days.
Aye.
It's good.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, it's a vote. Our next item at 7:30 was the Green Bush zoning update, which I am going to put off because we have a public hearing that is five minutes late.
Liz, is this Steve's?
Excuse me, gentlemen, are you ready?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Who's this is this?
This is what we have done. Only things in city that still need to be, that works.
Who put together?
Karen. This is what, this is to be voted, and this one down here is to be voted.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Bill Aronberger, I'm here with Paul Maribito, Greg Tansey, and our clients are in traffic, but we can get going.
I think at the last meeting, we accomplished a tremendous amount in terms of waivers. There were two left to be dealt with. So, I think that we will do those first. One is to, and you, is to approve the length of the dead-end road as 723 feet.
You submitted that.
Yes.
Yes, we did submit that.
Yep.
And the other one is, after close, 1.5% of all construction costs equalling $9,420. We rounded up to $10,000, and we held that. That's to be voted tonight as well.
Didn't we also have a waiver on the PCV pipe?
They didn't ask for one. I mean, if we have additional waivers, we need to add.
I thought they'd asked for it, I thought it was the last one.
Paul, do you ask for a waiver on what's it, on Karen? Bill, you're talking about PCV pipe?
Yeah, no, it was, I think you plan on using PCV? Or reinforced concrete?
So, what?
We re, we did replace some HDPE flat ends, sections with RCP. And that was one of the comments that is with that.
Pete, Peter, he came up with?
Yeah, I don't know if that's what your firm.
Okay.
So, do we need a waiver for that? We should ask for it if we need it.
I don't think.
We don't, the town doesn't like to use plastic pipe.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, if it's RCP now, then that's what the town likes to use. So, I wasn't aware that we needed any waivers for the drainage pipe.
I don't believe I'm proposing PVC, well, not for drainage, I mean, for, for, you know, for the sewer and septic, that's, there's PVC pipe with that, but that's not part of the drainage.
That's not part of the drainage, Board of Health approves, approves though, so.
All right, so we have those two waivers, any questions concerning them?
I guess on the road length, the rationale for the waiver in the narrative sheet that was provided in the initial application, it says, "The reason for the longer road is to achieve the benefits a flexible open space development offers." And I was just curious if we could discuss a little bit about, I don't, I don't see why having a longer road improves that situation. So, I was just curious if you could kind of explain the rationale for that.
Well, one of the things is, if you had a standard subdivision, the lots would be larger, and you wouldn't have any open space. That also allowed us to have the, you know, the full 16 lots and the septic systems would be on their own lots. But by having the roadway, that's approximately 120 feet longer. That, that provides open space that you would not have on a standard subdivision plan. You wouldn't have the benefit of a short septic system, which by the way, has been approved by the Board of Health. You wouldn't have the separation from the abutting properties that you have now. The houses could be 30 feet from their property lines and meet zoning. That's not the case here. You can see on that plan how far these homes are separated from the abutting homes on the two abutting streets. And I've, I've heard comments from some of the abutters that they're very happy to see that separation via the open space that you see on that plan. It also provides for less intrusion up against the wetland areas. Those lots on the subdivision would have been pushed back toward the wetland more than they are now. These, these homes have a fair amount of space between them, and they're, they are on smaller lots. But again, that, that additional 120 feet, even for a subdivision, is not unusual because of the design criteria that we have to follow for many of the properties within the street layout itself, so.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, I, no, I understand that, those points. I guess what I don't understand is how, to boil it down, is how does a longer road help preserve more open space? I'm not under, I'm not, so that, you're asking for a waiver to do a longer road, and the longer road helps you achieve the maximum benefits of a flexible open space development, according to the rationale why you're asking for the waiver? I guess I'm looking for why, why is a longer road? Basically, explain a little more about what you just told me. I'm not, I just, I'm not getting it, because I would think a shorter road.
Can I interrupt you one second? See, one of the things, again, Mike, and I, we discussed with Karen about this is, going into the future, maybe these flexible spaces will approach us a little different. The only reason why, because I seriously, I know the town has approached this, that you approve a definitive at the same time, but I really don't think that that is really what the bylaw says. But the point is, you're enumerating, basically, the way, the way I view this, is you're enumerating waivers that if this was a conventional subdivision, this is what the waivers would be. But actually, what we're approving here, and what we're building here, is a flexible open space development. And in order to achieve the purposes of that, which is, i.e., most of the open space, and also, particularly also, Ben, to address the issues, one of the issues initially, this is the third or fourth iteration of this, and one of the problems that the board had, which I think we successfully addressed, was the appearance and the stacking of some of the houses and all this. And this allows us to, you know, get a good amount of open space here, to aesthetically separate the houses, and also with the plantings and bufferings and all those things with the neighbors, you know, to achieve all those things. So, I think that's, does that answer the question, or not really?
Um, yeah, kind of. I guess I'm still just a little bit confused of the longer road.
But, but as far as in conventional subdivisions, I mean, definitive plans that aren't flexible is, to be frank with you, I don't think I ever had one approved for this board that there wasn't a road length waiver. It's always, it's 100 feet or something else. But basically, in the, in the recent past, the flexible open space is, A, what's preferred by the board and the town, and is a better utilization. So, that's how kind of everyone has been going to, to have the open space.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I can't comment on that.
No, no, but what I meant is to be, if you think about it, you could not design a flexible, you could not design a flexible open space that didn't have waivers from the definitive plan, it'd be an impossibility. You couldn't do it. For the simple reason is you couldn't, you, I suppose the only way you could do it is if you had miniscule sized lots, if you shrunk the lots down to the bare minimum.
Well, I don't want to go to semantics here, but you could have less homes.
No, but what, no, 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 but what I meant is, if you were going to, for the same amount of homes, you can't do it, it's an impossibility. That's why you need the waivers. And all the, all the waivers are really showing is the differential between what a definitive is and what a flexible is.
Yeah, I think your statement is for the same amount of homes.
Of course, because that's, yeah, because if you were going to go with a definitive, that's what you would have been building.
But, the, yeah, I'm not going to.
Well, yeah, I, yes, your assumption's right, I agree.
But the expectation is that on a conventional subdivision, that road would be that long or longer.
That it would, that it wouldn't be any longer than that, Bill?
It would be as long as the 723 or 30 feet or longer.
Oh, it probably would, because again, I researched at one point, five years ago, and the town of Sichu had, you know, 57 road length waivers that were granted over the past 30 years or something.
Okay. Ben, are you all set?
Yeah, for now.
All right, any further discussion on these waivers? I'll entertain a motion on the two of them. Move to approve the length of the dead-end road at 723, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the $9,420 be rounded to $10,000?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, your waivers are all set, gentlemen. All right, we have discussion points. Ownership of the open space is first and foremost. Proposed as a homeowners association, needs to be one of three forms indicated in the zoning bylaw. Donation to town for conservation, donation to a conservation trust, or a deed restriction accepted by the Commonwealth of Mass Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs.
Okay.
Pick one.
So, we're going to, we're going to ask the selectmen to, to accept this under the care and custody of the Conservation Commission. And that's traditionally on, I think I look back at a, I don't know, I think the last three, Evangeline Drive, White Ash, and then these ones, that was, that was the motive. Thinking if for some reason, the selectmen of Conservation Commission didn't want to do that, then we'd do one of the other two things. And one of the things, and again, I don't want to get, we get into the condition that the logistics of that should be, is that something to the effect is that conveyance is finalized, you know, some, something, like before issuance of an occupancy permit or before a permit or something, because the reality is, you need, the well-be, well-be built is or the related entity is buying this property. They're the ones who have to convey that. The current owners, the Curtis family, doesn't convey it. So, it's a catch 22, it's a condition. And in addition to that, we're going to have some type of covenant to secure performance or something or other, so we'll get into that later.
We did the waivers. The drainage will need DPW approval to tie into Anvonal Road. You, you need to make contact with DPW, and we need a written document to that effect.
You're going to do that, right?
Yes.
You will do that?
Yes.
PM will do this. Verify a board in agreement that trip generation was okay and traffic analysis satisfied.
I think we heard last time from the traffic engineer, the traffic report, it seemed reasonable about the trip generation.
Okay.
I think the only concern maybe you had about the school, but it seemed to be addressed.
I thought you agreed to it, and I just wanted to verify that the board was in full agreement.
Okay, there you are.
That's good.
Okay. All right, the homeowners associ, association, how does the board feel? Do we want to have town council review it or not?
Yes.
Yes.
I think so, yeah, I know it's standard.
Could I just make one comment to that? Is, the first is, Karen reviewed this, asked for some modifications before last meeting, we made it, but I have to say, that is the exact same homeowners agreement that town council's already been used for White Ash Farm, Sam Tilden Farm, Evangeline Drive, Heritage Trail, 105 Hadley Road. It's the exact same one, Mike Hayes drafted it, so town council's already reviewed this.
So, the groundsman pod should be an easy approval for you.
Twenty times. But the problem is, they just changed, it's a new person in the town council's office who probably hasn't run it.
Hey, they need to learn. Okay, so, that goes to town council. As far, um, this is the.
All right, soil absorption system, it's proposed as grass right now. Ben had mentioned the possibility of maybe being a natural field to kind of take on the historic character of the Curtis homestead, and you've never actually discussed that.
Yeah, and I could speak to that a little bit if you want. So, when I did my site business on this site, obviously, there's the historic farmhouse there, and it's really kind of a gem of a piece of property in that neighborhood, and if not, most of Sichu with the old farmhouse, and there's a lot of old stone walls and things like that. And, you guys, as a kid, I went to Hadley School, and, you know, it's, it's pretty iconic, honestly, when you're driving up Anvonal Road and you see the old farmhouse, and you want something, you see that, you don't see in a lot of places, is like a meadow, an open meadow habitat, and that's been there for a long, long time. And when I walked the property, you can see that, like, the meadows out front are still there. Even in behind the house, there's a nice, like, little blue stem grass, like, kind of native meadow. That's how those grass areas have always kind of been maintained at that property. And I thought that it might be nice, also considering we're losing a good amount of habitat with this redevelopment, to maybe use a seed mix or something on that front septic system. You don't just see a big grass mound that really doesn't provide any ecological services, but actually use a seed mix that provides a native meadow. So, we're preserving the natural look and feel of what that former farmhouse lot looked like. You're, you're providing or replicating habitat that's being lost in the form of the, the wildflower meadow or grass meadow. And I just think it would be a lot nicer outcome for the surrounding neighborhood, as well as the residents that, that live there. I mean, there's countless landscape design studies that show that having an amenity like that is really something that, that adds value to your real estate and also quality of life. So, that was, that was just something that I had mentioned to Karen when I saw it, that it was just labeled as a big lawn.
My only concern would be with, where we have the septic leaching field for the entire project, that we don't put something on the surface other than the standard Lumen seed that makes optimize the ability of that leaching area to function properly. Because, because it's close to the surface, you do get a fair amount of evaporation. But, you know, we can look at some alternative.
Yeah, and this wouldn't, I mean, I'm not, I wouldn't.
You're talking like fescues or something like that?
Me, me, yeah, like, for example, if you go to Pine Hills, their giant, like, water treatment system behind the old tavern there, that whole, that's, that's the sewer treatment plant, that big meadow behind there. So, that's where their absorption system is. So, something that, like, you wouldn't know it's a big monitex system, be like, oh, that, it's nice, they, they retain the natural meadow there, and it'll provide, you know, ecological anesthetic benefit to the neighborhood. And I, and as far as I know, and with my knowledge of landscape design, most of those seed mixes would be totally fine to go on top of a soil absorb system. You wouldn't, you probably wouldn't even need any soil amendments or anything like that. And I think the grading could be the same, and just kind of a matter of picking the right species and the right management plan.
What's the maintenance, Henny?
For meadow, you, I mean, it's, it's complex, but there's mowing, there's annual mowing involved, but in the first couple of years, it'd be a little more than annual, but after that, it'll be a lot less than trying to maintain a nice green lawn on top of a septic system. I can tell you that.
Didn't they do that at the public safety building? But it's not a septic system, but it's a, the retention, groundwater retention. Didn't they do that as, like, wild grasses?
Yeah, some sort of planting in there, I'm not sure exactly what, but.
All right, gentlemen, would you take that under advisement, please?
No, that's, we're amenable.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a good, a nice idea.
Plants need to be amended to include sidewalk rebuilding with vertical granite curb along Anvonal Road for the length of the frontage.
Can, can that be done by a note on the plan?
Yes. Yes.
We can do that, right?
By the way, can I, on that topic, I just was curious, I'm looking at the plan, the same plan I think you have here, the new landscape plan. That, is that a, is that a curbing that's shown around, like, the, the whole street? Or is that a sidewalk? There's a, it looks to me like the curbing. I know it's hard, there's two lines now on the landscaping plan, and I'm just trying to figure out what that is. See this?
Show the landscaping plan?
These land, these lines here, that's not a sidewalk, is it?
Yeah.
It is?
Yep.
So, is, are you, I didn't think you were proposing a sidewalk.
Yes.
The entire way.
Yes.
All right, all right, now I stand corrected, excellent.
The Taylor Memorial Sidewalk. The Taylor Memorial Sidewalk.
Uh, let's see, is landscape buffer at the rear of the site sufficient for the board? Is the board okay with the planting plan? All right, Karen, you had mentioned that there's only one row in that 30 feet?
Yeah, there's only just one row that they added, um, at my suggestion, and, um, the board just, I mean, the board just never commented on it last time, and so I wanted to know what, you know, if, if it's acceptable to the board, and if it's, um, or if it should be a double row of, um, pines, or pines and spruces, I think, or something that they have.
What is, do you have 10 PS?
Probably pine astrobis, white pine.
Ben, what do you think?
I mean, it's hard to, from my walk-through of the site, it's obviously always hard to envision when everything's cleared and graded out, what, what sort of privacy might be retained. I think towards the back, it is particularly a little bit thin, I think the 10 trees would help, but I, I think anything that helps transition the cleared open space to the, or the, sorry, the cleared area, the, um, with the, what's preserved as open space or existing tree line or stormwater, any sort of shrubs or, you know, trees that can help buffer that transition, um, I think is better, but.
Well, one of the things that I think had been said, that there is to be absolutely no disturbance in that 30 feet. At all, no clearing, nothing.
Right, we've had, well, we've done two things, on the construction plans, we, we have a note in bold, I can show it to you, it says that, um, part of any work on the lots themselves, that they have to put in a, um, uh, snow fence that'll mark the limit of work, at the rear property line of the lots, 'cause on the backside of the lots, they'll be doing some work in the stormwater basins, but once, once they start working on the lots, the limit will be clearly marked with that snow fence along the rear property line along the lots. Um, there's notes on the plan of that effect. The other thing that we proposed, and I'll, I'll show it to you if you wanna see it now, was we had prepared a plan, um, that shows how we would mark and identify the rear portion of the lots relative to where the open space is. What this shows is a series of, uh, boulders and, uh, four square posts with a plaque on it, that would identify this as the open space and, uh, and they're not to enter. These would be at 50-foot intervals, and they wall away around the perimeter. This is where your stormwater basins are here, there's one up here, and there's one down here. We prepared this plan for your input tonight, to see if you agree with what we're proposing.
So each one of those would just be a boulder, but the, there'd only be a sign going out toward the?
Yeah, the, our group was a boulder, and this would be the signpost with a plaque on it, which we use on a lot of sites, um, when we're working in, uh, conservation areas, where they want us to identify the, um, uh, limit of, say, the 100-foot buffer zone or 50-foot buffer zone. So they have a series of boulders, and then the plaques as well, on the posts. The posts are above the side, and we can have the plaques made up. It's a, it's a standard feature for identifying the boundaries of open space or of, uh, conservation areas.
Actually, we would condition that they would be, you know, uh, the posts, and they'd probably be four foot high with a, with a sign on them.
The other question I have, is there any possibility of salvaging all of those rocks and all those beautiful stone walls? Is there anything that can be done to add to the feel of that?
Well, the, the applicant's proposing to build stone wall along Anvonal Road, along the entire property, he would actually send it back from the street line, so it's on their property, so they would be solely responsible for the maintenance of it. As far as the other stone walls that are on the property, I don't know how much of that we're gonna be removing. When, when we were out there doing perk tests, uh, we, we had to break through some of them, some of them weren't, weren't that big, and I think people took rocks off of them years ago, you know, when that was a, a popular thing to do, but other than that, we didn't find many stone walls on the property.
What are you gonna do with that, um, oven?
The oven?
It's the old bread-making oven.
Well, they're probably amenable, if, if, you know, if, if historic society, if they all wanted, or wants someone to relocate it somewhere, they certainly can have it.
Pretty nasty.
That might be in the open space parcel, too.
Oh.
I'm not sure, but just thinking about walking around out there. It's pretty, it's pretty close.
Oh, you're talking about the one that's in the front part, over by the school?
Yeah, front, right, yeah.
Yeah, the old brick one?
Yeah.
That, that'll probably stay there, 'cause it's over by the laundry thing. I, I did see that.
Okay, so if, if we can keep it, let's keep it.
I mean, if you wanna come out and make bread.
No thanks.
Not in that.
Why don't we keep it unless we can?
What?
Why don't we just plan on keeping it?
Right, we're planning on keeping it. Okay.
I, I did wanna make just one comment based on what you said about no, um, disturbance in that 30-foot buffer. According to the landscaping plan, the trees would be in that buffer.
That's fine.
Okay, okay. I just wanna make sure that that was.
I don't want it stripped.
Right.
That's important.
Okay.
All right, um, sheet one change note, so what's that, 16 of?
There, there needs to be a change of the note on sheet, um, so it's not 16 of 16 anymore. I can show them that, but it, that's gonna relate to, uh, the sediment control plan anyways.
So we're on that topic, it's not this particular point, but on typos, and I can get back to you about this, but in the, it was in the, the SWIP plan, it referred to the city of Quincy, something referred to the city of Quincy. Just keep an eye out for that.
Yeah, SWIP plans are typo.
Okay, all right. Here's another good one, lighting, what have you planned?
Are there any streetlights coming out of there? Are there any streetlights out of there? No.
None?
None.
So, Evangeline.
Uh, on Evangeline, uh, I, just before I came here, I was over at, um, Stevie Auckland, and apparently what the electrical company wants to do is rent the light poles out to the homeowners association to generate revenue. But the bottom line is, the, the utility company will determine where they put, um, these light poles. They usually have them at, at, say, the intersection of the small road, and they'll probably put one at the end of the, uh, large cul-de-sac or near the end of it. They might have one other, um, maybe at the entrance. But they will determine where they, where they're gonna go and.
But you're, you're, now, are you referring to like, a, a sort of a typical city light? Like overhead light, as opposed to an ornamental?
No, it isn't an ornamental lantern type, it, it'd be, um, you know, a pedestal lantern, and not, not the, what they call the, um.
Ah, Cobra head?
Cobra head, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's what I, my main concern was. Like, in the other, I mean, I think recently in Benjamin Studley, Dear Common, they're all very nice-looking, I think.
Right.
Um, Evangeline's as well.
Right. And it'll be modeled after those developments.
Yeah, that process won't start with the electric company until they have a signed set of plans, until they have one, they won't even look at it.
Really?
No, they won't. It's, it's.
In the past, we've reviewed plans that have had the lighting at least shown on the plan.
And then, the electric, what the electric company does is, they go in, they'll put it, they'll put it in wherever they, they feel is, is the appropriate place. It's usually pretty close, but, you know, to where the engineer has, has cited them, but they specifically will, will cite them and put them where they deem they, they need to go.
So you're not proposing any type of fixture?
Well.
I mean, we, the board has often seen the fixtures, I agree with you, what you're saying about the electric company doesn't do anything until you get your endorsed set, but you're not proposing any type of fixture? You're proposing whatever the electric company gives you?
No, no, we will, we will specify that, that fixture.
All right, I think the board wants to see that. The fixture.
The same that we use at, in Evangeline and at Dear Common.
So we can get that to them, right?
Yeah, it's, it's just a cut sheet.
Karen, are you talking about locations also?
No, just a cut sheet, because it's absolutely true what he says about the, um, the, the, that's how they do it now, they don't even touch the electric system till they get the endorsed set.
Okay.
And at the entrance, will it be some type of lighting to light up the fact that it is, um, what are you calling it, the homeowners' estates, or the name of the road, or something?
Yeah, it'll be the, oh, lantern at the, at the intersection there, and it'll probably be placed so that.
With the street name, yeah.
Easily meet the street sign, maybe the, the entrance landscape, it might be within the cascade of the, um, of the lantern, just to make it look nice.
Yeah, use Curtis.
Okay.
Well, yeah, you're showing, I'm looking, I'm zooming up on the, the site plan, this is the, at the corner, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so you're showing the planting, and it looks like you've got the sign there that's gonna say Curtis Estates or whatever.
Well, it's gonna have to come up with some name, as a matter of fact, I'll have, they're gonna get this, get approved by the fire department, there's so many Curtis
Oh, please.
Names here that they, they, they're probably not gonna likely use the name Curtis Estates, because there's already.
Too many.
A half a dozen Curtis, some roads.
Vinyl Estates?
No.
We got too many of those, too.
Well, whatever, I mean, I see that the, there's, there's a sign here, so I would assume that there'd be lighting somewhere near there.
Or some type of, uh, backlighting, something in the front of the sign that just illuminates it.
Actually, question on Evangeline Drive, there's no lighting there for that, where it says, um, Estates, what is it, Turner, Tilden. There's a, there's, there's a sign that, that's all in stone, that says Tilden Estates, I don't think that's lit.
Yeah.
Okay.
The homeowners at Bell's Hill, and it could be up to the homeowners to do this.
Right.
Put in a big rock and a.
Which is what we did.
Something like that, it's a two-trail.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
And they have it lit. It's a little, well, anyway.
But you will be proposing two street names?
Yes, I'm gonna get those ASAP.
So is that second cul-de-sac actually a different street? Just curious.
Oh, it'd have to have it, probably fire department would have to have a separate street name.
Shortest street ever.
Short street.
We have one of those already.
There's one other thing besides lighting, but if I think of it again, I will ask. Um, Jeff Dirk was to provide conditions for school bus hauling and straight triangle restrictions.
Site.
Site restrictions.
He indicated last time, um, when he was leaving, that he would provide those conditions.
Did he?
No.
Right, so who should, should?
Do you want me to follow up with him?
Yeah, if you could, that would be good.
All right, um, we need to check the opera, um, operation maintenance plan?
Yeah, I got a separate standalone copy of the O and M plan, and I just have to just, uh, double-check some things in there.
Okay. And, um, how is sediment being controlled during construction? Is there a temporary siltation? Sump, some lot one, where else? Is the site being cleared all at once? Is it gonna be four phases, or?
So what, you need an hour to run that, Karen?
No, I, I want you to review it to the board, because what basically, what I'm getting at is, um, I just, I wanna make sure the basins aren't being used as a siltation sump, they only saw one siltation sump. It looked like there were four phases of clearing, and I wanted to verify that. And right now, the SWIP plans are a separate set of plans, and because the subdivision regulations call for erosion control, I think you should ask for this force, these four sets, these four SWIP drawings to be incorporated in the plan set. So instead of 18 sheets, it'll now be 22 sheets.
That's fine.
Well, I don't have a problem with that, and to, to answer the, um, question about the, the phasing, uh, phasing is a, is a good thing for, um, for an erosion control situation, a lot of, um, a lot of developers like to clear-cut the lot altogether and, and then build, uh, just because of its, uh, the economic element, um, of it, it's more efficient. But from, from an erosion control standpoint, if you can phase it, uh, at least to some extent, um, you're better off. What I envision happening, uh, usually, the, the phases that go on, is they'll hog out the, the road, they'll clear the road. They might, they might cut some trees, but cutting trees doesn't create the erosion that actually removing the stumps occurs. So you could have some tree cutting and not, not the, the clearing and the ripping of the stumps and the earthwork, until the road comes in, until some of the utilities get going, and then the phasing will start to, uh, take place on an as-needed basis as it, as, as the construction progresses. We do have several, uh, sediment traps, one of which will be located in the areas of lots one and two. And what, what that will do is, when the, the road is under construction, and when the, you know, things start get, getting going and the more, um, peak phases of construction, runoff will naturally go into that, into the sediment trap, and, and, and it's a fairly sizable trap. And what I have provided for to, to have it, uh, pumped out after every rainfall, and what it's gonna do is, it'll get pumped out into what's called a, um, a silt bag, which is a, a big porous bag that can be put on the back of a flatbed trailer or back of a pickup truck. You, you take a mud pump, you pump all the water out of these silt traps, and out of this, from the water, and all the sediment that goes into it, it all gets pumped out, and it gets pumped into the sediment bag on the back of the truck. The sediment bag leaches the water out onto a, onto a, uh, an area of ground that's not disturbed, but all the sediment is retained in the bag. And now you've just cleaned out your sediment trap, or there's no water in it, there's, most of the sediment is out of it, and it's ready to go for the next storm. The contractor can easily take that, um, your drive-off from the pickup truck or the, with the, the silt bag on the flatbed truck, and empty it in, in a suitable place where he's taking the rest of the spill. And I come back to the site and he's ready to go. The, the great thing about this is it is very flexible, and it's very easy for a contractor to access any sediment trap, even if it's strategically located sort of in a remote area of a site. Pickup truck can get, you know, can back up there, they can drop the pump in there, clean that basin and go. And several of these basins can easily be, uh, maintained at once in a relatively short period of time. And I find that this is a more fail-safe method of, of dealing with sediment traps, that the alternatives such as a, a stack pipe and a cover, now you're getting a point source discharge, you've got, um, maintenance issues, you've got potential cloggings, and this is something that forces the, uh, the contractors, keep the sediment game, because you can't rely on, you know, an overflow spillway, he's gotta, he's gotta do it, and, you know, I've, I've seen some really good results with that. I haven't, you know, had any bad issues with, with this type of, um, uh, system, and it's great, because each time you pump that. Each time you pump that, that trap, it's good to go.
Okay, thank you. Karen, anything else?
Alright, so the board was, I see, I want the snow fence added to the SWIP because the snow fence is in addition to the silt sock. And you want this included as part of the?
Yes.
Alright, that's all the issues that I saw. I saw that the drainage Merrill has basically said is okay. And if there's any other issues that the board has.
Ben?
I don't have any particular issues on the plan. I have some comments or things that I've observed. I don't know if you want me to bring that up right now. One thing that I was wondering about is, it's under my impression that the existing farmhouse is to remain and be moved to one of the lots. Has there been any sort of, or will there be any sort of structural analysis kind of to see whether that house is able to be moved? Or has that been assessed at all?
Yeah, Don Gillespie's already assessed it. Yeah, he already has assessed it because actually the historic part of the house is the main house, the small additional kitchen is newer, so the whole body of the main house is being taken, and he's actually gonna put dormers in it.
And?
As shown on.
Right, and is that supposed, is that intended to go to lot 16? I'm not sure which.
Lot 16, yes.
Is that something that we could depict on the plans or should be depicted on the plans?
I think that if I'm jumping a little bit of ahead, that's gonna be in a finding of fact.
Okay.
That it's a public benefit because they're preserving the farmhouse.
Okay. That's all I had about the house. I don't know if you guys?
House in the field.
Right, yeah. And so that was, my other comments were, I mean, obviously heard my opinion about kind of the grassed meadow and preserving that. The other was, just in the design standards, kind of a flexible open space. It talks about how important natural and historic features of the land, as determined by the planning board, et cetera, are to be preserved. That kind of gets to, and brought up the concept of the stone walls. I think that the old stone walls throughout the property in the kind of area of disturbance, I would hate to see all of the stone trucked offsite and dumped somewhere. I think that the stone could really, I understand, it's my impression also that it's gonna be used along the, along Anvil Road for a new stacked wall. But anywhere else that that could fit into the landscape design, particularly in anywhere that's a view shed of the public way or the surrounding neighborhoods, I think that would really help round out the landscape design and make kind of the clearing of this development be less jarring to the neighborhood and preserve some of that historic element. The same goes with large diameter trees. You guys have done a good job incorporating trees into the stormwater basins. I appreciate that. A lot of the existing trees will be remained. And then obviously the open space is not gonna be disturbed, so there'll be a lot of trees there. But anywhere that large existing trees could fit in, I understand they're constrained to your grading plan or something, but that's something that now that you have a landscape architect on the team, maybe they could help to assess and figure out whether there's some spots where the grading might work or any particular larger diameter of trees that help kind of maintain some sort of canopy or coverage within the subdivision could On that topic of kind of the landscape design and architecture, I was just wondering if any of the stormwater basins that, like kind of the one in the front corner, you know, off to the left corner of the soil absorption system, if that's going, if there's a planting plan proposed for that at all, if it's just gonna be kind of a grassed basin? And?
Yeah, we're talking about?
Yeah.
It was just another thing that?
Yeah, I mean, we could put some shrubs around it. I mean, that was originally my thought to do, you know, put some type of a mud screening. I would like to maintain that area as a field, you know, a look of a field because that's what it is now.
Yeah.
My intent was to try to preserve that because it kinda has that historic value to it, was my question or my hope. And the basin would be a loam and seed basin. But I mean, if we had a few small shrubs strategically located just to break it up a little bit, the
Yeah, I guess my-
The open space of the field, I think that would be nice.
I guess my question went more to the basin itself, not necessarily screening it from view, but if it was, if it was, and you answered saying it was a loam and seed basin. I was curious if it was something that could be some sort of a wetland replica, like not wetland, I won't use the word replication, but kind of a planted basin, in other words, rather than just straight grass. Particularly in that front corner one. I understand other ones are gonna have existing trees, the one out back's gonna be pretty screened anyways. It was more just the front corner.
I don't, I don't see why a wetland seed mix couldn't be in the basin.
Right.
And have it, you know, a higher grass so that, you know, the basin, you take the dip, the depression looking out of, look out of the basin, it'll have a little bit of a dip, but, you know, as you go by and with that in conjunction with the stone wall, it's gonna be, you know, the basin's gonna be right behind that stone wall. It's gonna be an area, a plateau area where you can maintain the basin. But, you know, as you go by, I think it's gonna, you know, it's gonna be hidden quite nicely from that stone wall.
Yeah. Okay, that's just something to think about. And a lot of what I'm bringing up is stuff that now that you're working kind of with this landscape architect, maybe they can, you guys can bounce ideas off each other and just keep in mind the design standards of the bylaw and things like that. On that topic, one other thing I have is about the open space and also the basins on the left side. Just on my kind of like walking around, I did notice this pretty substantial amount of like invasive species, Asiatic bittersweet and some other things that are kind of choking out a lot of the trees and native, or natural occurring plant matter that's there. That might be something to look into in terms of when you're designing the stormwater basins is how are you gonna control some of these invasive species so it doesn't come a big tangled mess, you know, once the site works done? And then also kind of in what's going to potentially be town owned land for, as open spaces, how, is there a way we can kind of nip that in the bud with invasive species control or something like that to make it a, kind of preserve kind of what's there before it gets a little bit out of hand? Just something to look into. And then the last thing I had was, and this is just throwing out an idea, is I think it would be really great is if this, if within the open space area, because I don't know if when you guys did the sidewalk, you noticed there's kind of already a trail that goes through there. And I remember when I was at Hatherley, actually, we did like science classes, we kind of trespassed a little bit and go do some nature, nature walks out there and stuff. I thought it would be really cool if we could do some sort of a path that connects the town public space at Hatherley School through the proposed open space area. And kind of where that path lays out and how it looks, like that would be to be determined. But just in my head, I envisioned how nice it would be if a path went through, you know, kind of the side corner of the property, you'd get a nice view of the meadow on top of the septic system and then walk up through the woods.
What about this existing path, like what, you know, what lot number?
It's kind of along the-
14?
Yeah, it kind of starts about 14 and then goes up kind of in towards the wetland area, which obviously there'll be some concom issues there with like a path in the wetlands. But, I mean, there's already kind of something there, so it's kind of a matter of just integrating it into kind of the proposed area of disturbance and trying to make it, you know, for kids that are gonna live in this subdivision, you know, maybe they can walk through the woods to get to school, something like that.
Oh, they will.
Right, so.
And they will, and they will make their own path.
Yeah.
You don't have to worry about that. So, are you all set?
Yeah, that's it.
Alright, Bill?
I'm all set.
Richard?
Just one minor thing on the new plan, the new landscape plan, that was the 28th, I believe, December 28th. I just noticed, talking about the sidewalk, as it goes around the cul-de-sac, it stops just about, it looks like maybe three or four feet short of the driveway. I would just recommend that that sidewalk connect with the driveway and then stop right there, because that little piece just seems kind of strange. And then the other thing, I wasn't sure if it should be shown on the landscape plan or not, we talked about a crosswalk to be delineated, didn't we? Or am I?
Yeah.
Kind of remember that. Because of the school and everything, so that the main road, right, down at the bottom where we'd have the entrance, there would be a crosswalk painted. I think you agreed to that.
A crosswalk where?
At the entrance.
At the entrance.
Across from Pleasant Street. No, no, no.
With the sidewalk.
With the sidewalk.
Yeah, there's, you know, you've agreed to the sidewalk here where it says like see enlargement.
You're talking about crosswalk going like this?
No. Yeah, exactly. Just connect it.
Across the front.
Yeah. I just thought maybe it should be shown on the plan. That's all.
Well, crosswalk stop, stop line and stop signs need to be shown because there'll need to be some type of stop sign and crosswalk at the little cul-de-sac, too.
And that was it.
Some stop sign at the little cul-de-sac as well?
I would think so, and I think there's gonna have to be a stop sign at the bottom, too.
Yes.
And crosswalks probably at both locations. And then whatever, whatever traffic monumentation you're gonna need should show on the plan.
Okay. Patty?
No, I'm all set. I'm happy that there's a landscape architect, try to maintain that, that farmhouse will be very nice over there, I think.
I think we've made a tremendous amount of progress. I really do. And I do appreciate how amenable you have been to our concerns.
Absolutely.
Because it's, it's an important subdivision. So, from here.
From here, I forgot to print out. I could go print it out if you'd like. I have a draft, I have a motion for the findings of fact, if you want me to go print it out so that we can start findings of fact tonight. We can do that, or we can wait till next time to try to get the findings of fact and the conditions.
Do you want to continue it now, or do you want to have her?
I'll defer to the board. I don't want to keep, what we'd like to be able to do, and particularly Karen, the conditions, if we can shed, we'll just give some commentary, we'd like at the next meeting to be able to review them, vote them, and if the board thinks we can do that, then we're perfectly mental. I don't want to make the board, it might be better to look at all together.
Yes, I think, you're right. So I think we've come to a good stopping point. I thank you gentlemen tremendously. Alright, do we have a motion to continue?
Yeah, so you would like me to share the findings of fact and conditions with them prior to the next meeting?
I think that's reasonable.
So that we get a consensus?
Yes.
Hopefully beforehand.
So there's no surprises?
Yep. Yeah, we do have a motion.
When is it continued to Karen?
March, no, February 8th at 7:30.
I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the definitive subdivision plan and flexible open space special permit for Curtis Estates at 90 and Vinal Road, a flexible open space definitive subdivision until February 8th, 2018 at 7:30 PM, and to keep the time for action for filing with the town clerk until February 28th, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Alright.
I forgot to print out that sheet. So it keeps just right. Yeah, sorry.
It's okay.
Alright, we could do the Green Bush zoning update, or we could, depends on how long you all want to stay here tonight.
Well, just curious, I know this gentleman is here for, I believe, the small soul attachments.
We can't start that till nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock. So we have 15 minutes.
Okay.
Do the Green Bush.
Alright, we'll talk about Green Bush.
Green, you were nice little bird there.
Oh, yeah. It'll be all black, I'm sure.
Half the place is, anything is gone.
Karen, did you rewrite this? This is Green Bush zoning?
No, but I mean, the pictures are, the pictures are what is the significant part there. I mean, the board is, for the, for the 2018 Springtown meeting, you're gonna be putting in an article for, to add one lot to the Village Business Overlay District, in the business district. And the maps here show you where this lot is. It's the one at the beginning, a driftway, the one with the medical building, that's been a medical building. I used to go to the doctor there when I was a kid. So that's, that's the one that you decided to do, and that's been, you know, we'll proceed, we'll be proposing the zoning publicaring on February 8th.
So, this is the existing zoning map though, correct?
That's the existing zoning map.
Not the proposed?
No. That's the existing zoning map.
And it's the only piece?
It's the only piece.
That's in the residential district?
Right.
Which makes absolutely no sense.
Does any, do we know why that happened at all?
Why it's that way, I can tell you why it's that way.
Okay, tell us.
The way, that was what the zoning line was before the new driftway came in, and that was the parcel. Because the old driftway used to go over the bridge on Union Street, then take a right by the rail yard. And so when that came in, actually what happened was, at the time, situat had, in early 60s, situat had no medical thing. And so Bob Seidel, Ron Mesa, you know, Bart Salento, John Dalco, all these guys from South Shore Hospital said, they lived in situat, they said, we'll open a medical building. So a variance was actually granted by the zoning board of appeals for medical uses.
Okay, so that's, that's why.
Right.
And I keep hearing references that it can only be for a medical building, is that true?
Medical related usage, yeah.
At this point in time?
At this point in time.
But if we change the zoning?
It could be mixed use.
Alright, that's it. I mean, that was one of the reasons why, you know, to change the zoning, you know, and put it into the Village Business Overlay District to just round out the, round out the corner.
And get rid of the variance, if you will, of finding that it had to always be medical.
Right.
That's part of the problem, because what happened was, as, literally, because I represented all the people who own that, and basically, other than Bart Salento, who's retired, every other owner has passed away.
Yeah, they have, they're gone.
And that's it, actually, from this map, I didn't realize that part of that parcel was on the other side of the Hatherley Brook.
Yes. Interesting and interesting. Okay. Are there any thoughts or concerns about this?
I do, I do have a little bit of concern with town meeting. I think that even though this seems rather innocuous, we, as a planning board, maybe need to do a little bit more PR.
Oh, we plan to.
I'm very worried about, kind of like, depending how the tone of town meeting goes, I remember the back part of the Drew Company lot where they didn't sell the land. It just, we need to work kind of with the public to help explain this, or this could be a stumbling block for future Green Bush rezoning.
And also, like, looking at this?
You don't know what that is?
This is really confusing to a person.
Yeah.
That doesn't understand our zoning.
And let me just say that last night, EDC had a workshop at the brewery, which was well-attended, and we discussed, at the onset, I told them about this new zoning bylaw. But most of them are business- But most of them are business owners in Green Bush, and we are going to, over time, streamline this mess so that it becomes more amenable for the future. So we're going to have another workshop for this, probably in March. Did you feel, Bill, that it was informative?
Yeah, I found it was very good. I mean, it's a great star, and it's, it's great, because this is the only area where, in, the overlay bylaw, obviously, is good, but there's a lot of things. Like, one of the things, at the last time, trying to get there, one of the issues has to do with how do you deal with existing buildings? I know you want everything up closer, but you have to have, the board has to grant exceptions, otherwise you end up tearing down every building in the zone.
So, but it's a work in progress, and it's not something that will go before town meeting for at least a good another year or so, because we have to bring in the stakeholders, they have to be comfortable with what's going on, as you say, PR, and we go from there. So, as I said last night, it's all about communication, and some of us are going to agree, and some of us are going to disagree, but we're going to keep the dialogue going.
I apologize, I wasn't able to make it. Did it start with the visioning plan that was put forth by the consultant?
Yes, and unfortunately, he had a personal emergency, so Brad took the 82 slides and cut them in half and zipped right through it, because sometimes those PowerPoint things can be deadly.
Overwhelming.
But it's been offered to whomever wanted. It was well-received. It really was, and Drew gave a presentation briefly, Chick Fagan, Mr. Dillon was there who wants to develop the corner that we're going to zone. That's another interesting issue. So, you know, it only lasted until, basically, it was an hour, but I think it was an hour well-spent. And then afterwards, people were talking to each other, which I think is very important. Very, very important. Okay, so, let's do accounting.
Sure.
I move to approve the requisition of $420 to Chesia Consulting for inspections for 50 Country Way, for $40.61 to Situate Mariner for subscription, for $4.91 to WB Mason for office supplies, for $230 to Image Resolutions for printing of zoning bylaws, for $1,170 to Merrill Corp. for inspections at Otis Place 37 through 39, for $1,105 to Merrill Corp. for inspections at Otis Place 41 through 43, for $497.98 to Amory Engineers for inspections for Blanchard Pharma Estates, for $3,006.25 to Merrill Corporation for peer review for Curtis Estates/90 and Vinyl, and for $33.32 to WB Mason for office supplies.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes? Not yet.
Not yet, but, I mean, next time, there'll be minutes. There is, you will have, there'll be a draft set of minutes for 12/21 prior to next time. So you will have to stay tuned, Richard. I will send you the draft, they were just completed today, I haven't looked at them, but you'll have to do a Mullen rule based on...
Right, I was just going to ask about that. I did watch the video.
Based on the two of those. I understand the video is a little bit hard to hear.
You know, it was in the library, and you could hear the background kind of rumbling of the HVAC system, but overall, it was good.
So I will send you the draft meeting minutes next week, along with the blank Mullen rule, and you have to file, it has to be brought in to be filed with the town clerk before the next meeting.
Right, that's what I thought, before the seaside is back on.
Right, which is, that's on the 25th, yeah.
All right, layers on reports? Any reports? Traffic rules, did you have a quorum?
You just did EDC.
I just did EDC, so I guess we're done with that. Planning and development report?
Couple things. John Helen has applied for his building permit, and I think he's received his building permit for the, for the Union Street. He has signed a note to me saying that you had asked him to come in, Helen, he's going to evaluate replacing the garage doors at the end of the project versus three months because he says it all, it's going to vary on money. So if you would like him to come back in here and talk to you about that, then I will ask him to come back and talk to the board.
How do you all feel about that?
I wasn't in on this.
I know that, well, what was the exact, I thought it was a recommendation that if they were going to replace it, from Bill, you said if they were going to replace one of the doors, that they do all of them.
Makes sense.
But what was the exact thing that we agreed on, Karen?
Well, he was supposed to come back to the board within 90 days to determine if he was going to replace them. So I had him, I had him write something. He wrote that regarding existing 312-foot garage doors to be evaluated, end of project if budget allows replacement. If replaced, doors to be similar to specs on new eight-foot doors. So if you're not happy with that, I will require him to come in at the end of the project, or require him to come in and talk to the board.
There's some small skeptical part of me that sits there and says that when you get all finished, you look at it, and figure, $2 in my pocket, I'm not going to spend it on doors.
So then you would like him to come back in prior to an occupancy permit?
I would think so.
Okay. Then I will write him a note, I will write him a letter from the board that he must come in prior to an occupancy permit.
Chuck, you want to agree with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
I happen to be a negative vote on that plan.
I don't think we made it a requirement, though.
I don't care.
Okay, that's fine. I just was, wanted to be clear about it.
Thank you, darling.
All right, so we have an extension request from 214 Clapp Road, Studley Farm, to extend the subdivision for another three years. The technical time passed, a subdivision's good for three years, and they're asking for an extension. It expired on 5/8/17, so really, what we want to do is to have a motion to extend the time for completion of the flexible open space definitive subdivision for Benjamin Studley Farm for an additional three years from the endorsement date of 5/8/17 to 5/8/20 in accordance with the applicant's request and condition six of the subdivision certificate of action dated 2/3/14.
And the reason he wants the extension?
Well, it's not finished.
It's not finished. He's working diligently at completing the subdivision, it's just that it's going slower than he thought.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I don't either.
Do you need a motion?
Just you can say as I read.
Okay. So moved as read. Is there a second?
And I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I've asked Blanchard Farms for an extension, too, because theoretically, their three years are up. They were up last summer, too, and so, you know, they're, you know, I've asked for another three-year extension to complete them so that, I mean, I know they're going to be done, hopefully, in the next year, but we should be on record as having the extensions.
Yeah, I think all the homes are constructed, and Blanchard is just the top coat of the street, right?
Top coat is on, it's, they have, they have a punch list items to do. Lawson Green 40B will be heard by the ZBA on January 25th. I'm going to just send a generic letter from the planning board with concerns regarding the project eligibility letter. It was supposed, it said it was in the packet, but it really wasn't. They show the lot divided, and they can't divide a lot without an A&R, and we have not received an A&R. And they propose to be using some grasp-type pavers, and I'm going to ask for the detail for that to be shown, but my biggest concern is you can't divide a lot, the zoning board can't divide a lot, it has to be the planning board. So, that's, those are some generic comments on that. I'll also be working on a comment letter to the ZBA for 14 to 16 Old Country Way.
Right.
That's going to be in February. But I hope to have that comment, I mean, I hope to have that for you to review either at the, hopefully, at the 25th meeting of January.
Meadow Glen.
Harring Brook Meadow.
Harring Brook Meadow.
Does the board want to comment on that, or?
I was curious, over, with the highest tide that we ever had in history, was that property flooded?
It was, with ice floes everywhere. Yeah, right up to 3 a.m.
Wow.
So they want to build in a puddle?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
Evacuatable. They want to be able to evacuate from it.
Yes. Good. All right. Okay, Karen, thank you.
So that's where we are with that.
That's where we are. All right, we now have a public hearing, continued public hearing for small cell attachments at three telephone pole locations.
Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening.
See you.
Good evening.
See you as well.
As you may recall, we met back in November before Thanksgiving, and at that time, the board requested the applicant agree to a continuance to provide additional information related to the proposed small cell antennas. So subsequent to that meeting, we've made two separate filings. I have hard copies that I can pass off to the board if that's helpful.
Okay, here's the thing. Have a seat, sir. We have gone around and around this mulberry bush more times than I care to think about. Karen, I would like you to comment on this, please.
Well, the applicant has, they submitted new information, which I sent you electronically, and he has hard copies here tonight. The new information shows the difference between what was requested of him last time, what happens when you, without the small cell attachments, and where the increased coverage is for the small cell attachments. And I think that the pictures clearly show that there's a demonstrated need for these small cell antennas. And our bylaw does allow these, and we're permitting the antenna only, we are not permitting poles. So if you would like him to give you just the graphics so you can clearly see where it is, then that's, you know, but I think the need has been shown. I think they've met, I think they've met the criteria of the bylaw.
I agree.
And there are three separate special permits that have been requested, so there are three separate proposed draft decisions because they are three separate special permits.
One of the things that we need to be very, very clear about, I believe it's Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
We have apps, the planning board has absolutely no control over poles.
Agreed.
None.
Agreed.
We have dealt with town council, we've talked to them, they have looked at what we're doing, they have agreed with what we are doing, we are within the law and the bylaw. So I know how upset you are, I fully can empathize with you about this, but unfortunately, with the FCC, our hands are really tied. So, Ben, do you have anything you want to add?
About the polls?
Yeah, no, not the polls.
Well, yeah, I know. Not, not, there's nothing I can really add, unfortunately.
Okay, Bill?
I think I'm somewhere between a rock and a hard place.
There you go.
I feel the same way.
I read, like, four white papers on this during the storm. You have the right under the First Amendment to say that you don't like this, but we really don't have any choice here.
You don't. You really don't, Mr. Hunt.
The, where we disagree is, agreed, Eversource, the utility has a legal right in Massachusetts to put up a pole, we're a residential pole, we agree on that. Horizon has a perfect right to identify the need for a tower within a given area. The planning board has the right to establish the rules around, within those areas, can they put poles and what requirements of that. So I think where we're a little bit of a difference in gap of our understanding is, the planning board can write the rules that govern where within areas these towers can go. That is completely within their realm. So in this case here, we have a situation where, as near as I've been able to estimate with people who have some understanding of it, in the fall of 2016, Eversource and Horizon made a deal for three poles. My good fortune is, in their haughtiness, they did not anticipate Mr. Pritchard's question at that time, which is what's key, brought about the continuances, how many of these will you need and when will you need them? The estimate for situation is between 35 and 50, probably Horizon. I think that question that he asked that made it a town issue, not a homeowner issue. The deal between the two of them is that Horizon has exclusive use of that pole, which means other cell communicators will need to put up their own poles. So now we may go from 35 to 50, to 70 to 100, if we just have two carriers. I agree, Eversource has a legal right, they have a legal right to define the area. I would submit only the town planning board can, by the rules and regulations on towers within an area, control where they put them, because what I'm hearing you say is that no one in town can make any ruling for where they want to put a cell tower, as long as there's a, because we already know, we already know Eversource will put up a pole, and they may say that we're going to move everything over from the second pole, and it hasn't happened. So what you're telling me is, Eversource and Horizon will be able to make the judgment to put up these towers in the town, we still don't know, I'm not sure to have answered that question yet, they can make the judgment to put up these towers wherever they damn well please, because what I'm hearing from you is you have no power over that anymore. I disagree. I think you have a perfect right to decide within the areas they designate where the poles should go.
Can I say that in my study of this, the language is very important of what is a tower and what is a pole? And they're not telling us that they want to put up a tower, they're telling us they want to put up a pole. We have the right to tell you where a tower goes. But we don't have the right to say where a pole goes. I think that's the difference.
That's the delineation.
That's the huge difference right there.
And also to...
Can I confirm, so you and I are in agreement?
No. He's not building a tower.
No, he's putting, you have the right to determine where these cell units, or whatever they want to call them, where in the area of town they designate, how many areas, how many areas they designate, but the planning board is able to establish the rules and regulations around placement of these cells in the areas they determine they need them.
No, the town has the right to establish where we put a tower, so, like, what's out here is a tower, and that's not what they're proposing to us.
No, we're talking about a cell, agreed, we're talking about a cell unit that they now have exclusive use of because with their arrangement with...
That we have no control over that.
Well, we have, the zoning bylaw...
I'm not sure we agreed.
The zoning bylaw says that they have the right to put up the antenna, and that the town can ask them to determine the need. The planning board has requested the studies...
For an area that they, in the areas they need them.
Right, and so...
Not the poles they need them on, the area they need them on.
The area, and so that they have asked for the information, and the information has been supplied to show that X pole is the loca... has been supplied to show that X pole is the location where it's needed, and so that determines, the board is, that suffices for a determination of need.
The, if I interpret, if I heard, what you're saying is, that cell unit on that pole services that immediate area.
Right.
Does it service Humrock or does it service just Harvard Street?
It services an area that's greater than Harvard Street.
Right.
It services an area that goes to on a map. Maybe you would show the map quickly of where, you have a graphic in there that shows existing and proposed, where, that shows how the need, where this tower is going to service and where the need, why it fulfills the need.
Yeah, do you want me to pass these out?
Versus any other pole in that area?
Right, and they are...
A hundred yards away from that pole, you have a fire station, and it has a telecommunication.
If you look at seven thirty point four, a wireless communication antenna may be installed on a utility pole in any zoning district, provided the antenna is not more than ten feet in height, which this is not, subject to the application obtained a major site plan approval from the planning board. This, this is... Bill, do you have anything you want to add to this? You were involved in all of this for years.
Guilty by association.
The way you can...
What I understand this gentleman's argument is...
Ten feet tall, the way you get around that is you put the pole, you put the pole twenty feet up.
As I understand, the gentleman's argument is, sitting there saying is, he agrees that we have the right to come back up and put up the unit. What he doesn't agree to is that the planning board, no, what he's saying, suggesting to us is the planning board has the opportunity to put it on Plan Pole B as opposed to Pole A.
Correct.
And the pole, and the, the applicant has indicated to the planning board that it cannot be on a distribution line, it cannot be on a pole that has transformers on it. So their analysis, which is proprietary, has determined that this pole, the poles that they have chosen do not have, they're not distribution lines and they don't have transformers on them, so therefore they are appropriate poles in the location that the need is to service the, to service the cell service.
Like, confirm it, Karen, they make the judgment where they want to. So these entire five sessions have been wasted, because Eversource clearly can put up a pole within the devil pole, Verizon can say, we want a pole there. But what you've just indicated is, the board has no authority, I don't know why you spent five sessions deciding. What we're saying is, they decided by their proprietary information to arrange three exclusive poles, where they are the only cell unit involved in that pole. And what you're all carrying that pole within for whatever number that map the situat shows, the thirty-five or the fifty, they make the decision. And if that's what you're saying, then that's fine.
Well, and I believe the applicant will tell you that they, they showed that based on these pole locations, that there's a need for the service.
Okay, but they will not share how they arrived at that. So we are coming back to, they are making the decision, which is contrary to what I understood this process before. So Eversource produced a pole where they asked them, they pay rent, and they make it exclusive for Verizon, and they can put them up any place they damn well please. That's what I mean, Bill.
Well, I think the applicant should speak to that.
Yeah.
Well, I think what we've tried to describe throughout this process is what Verizon Wireless does is it enters into a license agreement, working in conjunction with EverEverSourcer and Grid, they're the owner of the utility pole. It all starts with Verizon Wireless's RF department determining that there's a particular need in an area for capacity or coverage to offload demand on its network based upon an analysis of data, based upon the fact that the existing macro sites is, the RF engineer Keith has already described in some detail at the prior meetings, they're simply being overburdened, they can't handle the necessary capacity, so we need to bring in these small sites, small cell units to provide that particular service. The way the location is chosen, while Verizon Wireless has discriminatory access to any utility pole right of way, the owner, the utility, impose certain engineering limitations. And what we did in one of our submissions was to try and take this board through the analysis that we did and look at the feasibility of various locations. All those feasibility analysis has to, certainly not, the location will service and provide the service that Verizon Wireless, I think, has documented on three different occasions, why it needs it. So there's limitations on, as Karen has described, as far as whether there's primary power, whether there's transformers, so all those limit the availability of locations that Verizon Wireless has. In making the determination for the locations that have been selected, what RF did was look at those particular locations based on what they received from the real estate people in the field, that these were the, these were the locations that they believed would meet the utilities' criteria as well as RF's criteria. So these locations were determined based upon their location in relation to the coverage and capacity requirements. They're close enough, the two, Small Cell Zero One, Small Cell Zero Two are close enough, they have to be close to the beach, as we have discussed, one of the areas they're trying to offload is the beach area, those peak times when there is an influx of usage on the network, so that's why they need a clear line of sight. We talked about the fact that if there's any types of obstructions in the way, the signals won't propagate through, so if there's a large sand dune, or if there's a building in the proximity, so that's why we needed the additional height as well. So I think what we've tried to establish, and what we've established, I think, through our prior and these current filings, is that these locations are the best locations available for Verizon Wireless to satisfy its capacity and coverage requirements. As Karen has alluded to, we provided before and after coverage maps that illustrate an approximation, as we had discussed at prior meetings, the type of software that we use for these weren't really designed for such low heights, because there's so much obstruction and clutter in the way, but we were able to approximate the actual coverage, capacity, offload gains that we were realized by installing these facilities, and it clearly shows the fact that there is this gap, and that these facilities at these locations will allow Verizon Wireless to address that gap.
So can I ask one question I think I should know? We're going to 5G, right? This is what all these small cells are for. What G are we at now? Are we at three or are we at four?
Four G, 5G is just something that's, I won't say speculative, but it's just being tested in, I think, very limited ways by some of the wireless service providers.
I read a lot about that, that not going to be able to exist if we don't have these because the broadband is so cluttered.
Yes.
Okay.
Ben? Nothing? Karen, what was your conversation with town council, please?
Well, I mean, town council has reaffirmed that we cannot, we're only permitting antennas, we have nothing, we're not permitting the poles, that town council has reviewed the draft decisions and believes we're on firm legal ground with them.
Karen, could I ask, why would a meeting be necessary then if they make the choice with them? Why would they have to file requests for three separate poles if they in fact make the decision?
But what we've asked for the here, I believe, is, they, yes, they have the right
to designate an area that needs coverage. The town planning board has the right to determine the regulations around within an area these cell units should go.
It's...
The gap between the two is, I'm not sure why you're wasting five minutes on this then, what you're really saying is, they decide.
They've decided...
They tell Eversource, we need a pole there, put it up, these are all of our information that produced out of our proprietary program, which you can't say.
Right, but they, the chair has asked, and they have provided more refined maps every time, to show that their location satisfies the need, which the bylaw says the need is, the planning board can ask where the need is, and that's what I think they've done.
How many poles serve from Verizon, how many poles are there in the area of...
We cannot anticipate what may happen in the future.
How many poles will they have?
Yeah, but Verizon's come back and indicated that, and for sake of argument, let's say it's Pole A, is where they want to put this antenna. So we've come back up and we're in a position that sits there and says, we've, they've demonstrated, at least to me, that there's a need for an antenna at that location. What hasn't been demonstrated is that there's an alternative to Pole A, that it's better, not only for Verizon, but for everybody involved. That's the missing piece. So I've come back up, I've got a location, I've got an antenna, I've got the responsibility of coming back up to approve it, but I haven't got anything that tells me that I should approve it for B as opposed to A.
Well, I think two, one is you have an area, their legal right is an area. So where we have a gap in what we've resolved it is that they, within an area, they need additional capacity. You are not prevented from establishing rules that govern within the areas they tell you they need them. What type of area should they be? Be ten feet from a house, or should they be on a street that is a hundred yards away or in a public...
But you've made reference to seventy feet away over to the fire station.
Fire station, yeah.
Right, but I don't have anything that tells me that the fire station would be an adequate, similar or inadequate place, a location to put that antenna.
So we come to the same place, Verizon and Eversource can make the judgment with the, wherever in town they want. So I mean, that, I'm just confirming, that's what you're saying.
That's the position I find myself in, yes.
All right, anybody else in the audience? All right, we're ending this. Karen?
I believe I gave you all motions in your pocket. There's one for each...
I think I got one.
There's one for each cell tower, I mean, antenna.
Somewhere in the...
Did you already got that?
It's in, it should be in the bottom, everything was in order.
That means nothing. Do you have it, Ben? Start reading.
This is for the wireless communication antenna on utility pole, special permit adjacent to twenty-six Kennelworth Street approval. Okay. I move to make the following findings a fact. On August fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless, applied for a special permit and major site plan review for installation of a small cell unit on a replacement utility pole number two thirty-six dash one, within the private way adjacent to twenty-six Kennelworth Street under Section seven thirty point four and Section seven seventy of the situat zoning bylaw. The public hearing opened on October twelfth, two thousand seventeen, and was continued to October twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, November ninth, two thousand seventeen, December fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, and January eleventh, two thousand eighteen. Finding two, the existing pole is in the private right-of-way of Kennelworth Street adjacent to House number twenty-six. The existing pole is in the residential R three zoning district. Finding three, the applicant has submitted a letter from National Grid, which indicates they have entered into a pole attachment agreement to install, attach, maintain, repair, upgrade, and use wireless communications equipment and appurtenances on certain utility poles, subject to their agreement, including initial installation, ongoing maintenance, and upgrades or replacements of said equipment. Finding four, the proposed installation location of the small cell antenna will be on a pole that replaces the existing pole in this location. Five, the application indicates that small cell units allow Verizon Wireless to strategically install antennas in high-demand locations while improving wireless performance and while mitigating visual impacts through the installation of the as-proposed small cell antenna system. Six, according to the affidavits from applicants, expert RF engineers, Mohammed Al Samari and Keith Valante, responsible for evaluating adequacy of service, the installation will improve the reliability of the 4G service in this specific location.
No, it goes to the back of the page.
At this...
What are we looking at?
There's no page two.
C is a summary of the analysis.
So it went from six to C.
Missing stuff. I see page two.
They screw up and get another right pole yet?
Oh, yeah, ours are just single sided, that's why, we're missing the, in between pages. Okay, continuing on finding six. Improve the reliability of the 4G service in situat and fulfills the town's stated preference that alternatives to newly constructed towers be explored. Finding seven, the small cell unit will consist of a twelve-inch diameter by thirty-eight point seven inch high cylindrical antenna mounted on a replacement pole with two remote radio heads and associated wires, cables, diplexer, converter, and electrical meter. A replacement forty-foot pole will be installed to hold the small cell antenna. The top of the new utility pole will be thirty-four feet in height, and the small cell antenna will be mounted on top of that for total height of the replacement pole, with the antenna at thirty-eight feet two inches. The antenna is less than ten feet in height and meets the requirements of Section seven thirty point four and seven thirty point two A of the situat zoning bylaw. Eight, the application has provided information that the replacement pole is structurally sound and capable of supporting the loads created by the antenna as indicated in Section seven thirty point two B point one of the zoning bylaw. The plan shows that the replacement utility pole and proposed equipment shall comply with the standards specified in applicable industry, state, and federal design codes. Nine, the application indicates that the proposed antenna, U Guard, Weatherhead Conduit, and RRH Solar Shield shall be painted to match the existing utility pole. It meets the standards of Section seven thirty point two B point three of the situat zoning bylaw, requiring an antenna mounted on a structure shall be colored or painted to blend with the structure. Ten, the applicant has submitted the following evidence to support the demonstration for the need for the antenna in order to provide significant improvement in network coverage and capacity. A, the applicant's FCC license to operate. B, an affidavit from RF engineer Mohammed Al Samari stating that he is Verizon's engineer with the network design responsibility for their network serving the town of Situate, that he certifies under penalty of perjury that he has conducted a review of the town's existing network performance and completed computer simulated projections of the service that will be provided at the proposed location following the installation of the small cell antenna system. And as a result of such analysis, he certifies that there is a significant need to address gaps in capacity service in the town of Situate at this specific location. C, a summary of the analysis referenced herein that summarized the existing network performance and the expected network performance following the installation of the small cell antenna system. D, the applicant provided coverage maps, Situate SC zero one, SC zero two, SC zero four, existing approved seven hundred megahertz LTE sector footprints, and Situate SC zero one, SC zero two, SC zero four, existing approved seven hundred megahertz and twenty-one hundred megahertz LTE coverage, and provided an interpretation of such maps that they testify, that they demonstrate a significant need for the proposed antenna. E, the applicant provided a table, one, Situate SC zero one utility pole feasibility assessment supporting the location for the proposed small cell antenna. F, an affidavit from RF engineer Keith Valante stating that the facilities are within areas where Verizon has identified a need to install additional facilities in order to provide reliable wireless service. He certifies under penalty of perjury that the small cell locations are intended to complement the conventional macro sites and are used as a capacity solution to target isolated areas of heavy usage, and that the analysis determined the location is the most appropriate solution to meet network capacity and coverage objectives for this area. G, the applicant provided additional coverage maps on January eighth, two thousand eighteen, showing Situate mass, existing seven hundred megahertz and twenty-one hundred megahertz LTE coverage, Situate mass, seven hundred megahertz and twenty-one hundred megahertz LTE coverage with SC zero one, SC zero two, SC zero four, Situate SC O one, SC O two, SC O four, existing approved seven hundred megahertz LTE sector footprints, and Situate SC zero one, SC zero two, SC zero four, seven hundred megahertz LTE sector footprints with small cells, which interpretation and testimony provided shows a demonstrated need for the proposed antenna in the location shown. This information meets the requirements of Section seven thirty point four of the situat zoning bylaw for demonstration of need. Finding eleven, the applicant meets... Finding 11, the applicant meets Section 70.6 of the Situate zoning bylaws, Sections A through J, as, one, the proposed installation of small cell pole attachments will enable more reliable and improved wireless service in Situate addressing coverage and capacity network requirements in the least intrusive way you can. Two, the small cell equipment has been sighted and designed to minimize visibility from neighboring residences and streets, and it will not detract from the visual appearance of the surrounding neighborhood. Three, the small cell attachment will be mounted on a replacement of the existing utility pole and will have no impact on traffic, safety, or access. Four, there will be no ground equipment, no pole-mounted equipment will obstruct the public way, and electric and fiber will be obtained from the existing service. Five, there's no need for sewage disposal or water use or storm drainage. Six, there's no cut-and-fill or destruction of other features. And seven, the obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations is minimized by installing the as-proposed and approved herein small cell equipment on a replacement pole. Finding 12, the application meets the requirements of the Situate zoning bylaw, Section 730.4 and Section 770 for a wireless communication antenna on a utility pole. That's the findings of fact.
Question, just one, was the utility poles themselves aren't painted. There was a whole section about the top would match the paint.
I believe it says it'll be painted to match, so.
Yeah, but-
It's brown, woodish paint. I don't-
The antenna, yes.
Do you want me to re-
No, no, I thought it was, I just thought, well, the pole's not painted, so how are you going-
It's weathered, so it'll be gray.
You got a bug on you.
Oh, great.
Thank you for sharing it.
Sorry, it was a, yeah, something like that.
Am I able to ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Under number four of the suggested motion, why are you voting on it? Is the board able to place a requirement in there that the second pole is down in a reasonable period of time? That has been the major problem in Massachusetts.
I know that, and I know that the selectmen are upset with Verizon and/or National Grid because they have to wait for all of the services to be switched over. There were double poles all over town. We can't put this, we have no control over that. If you want to deal with the selectmen on this issue, go for it.
Why can't we?
You want to?
Why can't we sit there and say that the pole's got to be removed within a certain period of time?
Well, I think that Town Council has already offered on that. That's governed by state statute.
I'm not suggesting that we don't do it. I'm suggesting that it's done in a reasonable length of time.
Well, under state statute and case law, that's interpreted, the exclusive jurisdiction to deal with double poles is with Department of Telecommunications and Energy. The local municipalities, I mean, the decision that I read that deals with this particular issue, the court's reasoning was that there is a Commonwealth statewide plan that's in place, and that having each local community impose its own requirements would disrupt that. So under state law, local boards are prohibited from imposing any additional requirements on the removal of double poles. I think that was something that was discussed.
I discussed that with Town Council, and I've basically been told that the Attorney General has made some rulings that we really can't regulate double poles, and if the applicant agrees to have that as part of the permit, then we could put it. But otherwise, we're not permitting poles. We're permitting the small cell antenna only, not the pole.
We don't, I'm sorry, we don't control in any manner how that is conducted. We're just licensees. Our authority is just limited to the right to put the antenna and the other equipment on there. We don't regulate or control moving over the, anything, so.
I understand that, and I have sat through more than one selectmen's meeting where National Grid has come in and the selectmen have, you know, peppered them with questions, and one of the selectmen, "When are you going to get rid of these double poles?" And the answer has always been, "We have to wait for this one, and this one, and this one to move everything." And that can take a very long time. So their dilemma is not someone else's emergency, so I think under the circumstances, Bill, I understand what you want to do, but I'm not sure I agree.
I think I find myself in the position as the young man across the hall. He's raising the issue is the fact that we've got three people here that are making a decision that none of us have control over. Having said that, I would throw up.
Continue, sir.
Okay.
Do we have a motion on the findings of fact?
Yep.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the special permit and major site plan review for the installation of small cell equipment on a replacement utility pole number 236-1 in the private way adjacent to 26 Kenilworth Avenue with the following conditions. One, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall conform to the plans entitled Verizon Site Name Situate Mass SC01-385925, Pole VZ Number 236-1, within the private way adjacent to 26 Kenilworth Street, Situate Mass O2066, County Sheets T-1, Z-1, C-1, A-1, revised dated June 6, 2017, by Kupu Karan Kolendai Valu, Professional Engineer of NBNC Engineering Services LLC of Chelmsford, Mass. Two, the replacement pole with the small cell unit installed shall not exceed the height of 38 feet 2 inches from ground level. The color of the small cell unit antenna shall match the replacement pole color. Three, the proposed small cell unit installation includes installing one cylindrical antenna of 12-inch diameter by 38.6 inches at a top height of 38 feet 2 inches, two remote radio heads and associated wires, cables, diplexer, converter, and electrical meter to a 34-inch tall, as measured from ground level, replacement pole 40-foot long to replace the existing utility pole, as is detailed in the drawings referenced in Item 1 above.
It's like a 34 feet there.
Oh, sorry.
Instead of 34 inches.
Yep. So that's an electrical pole 30 foot, as measured from ground level. Four, the applicant shall maintain the replacement pole and the small cell antenna system for the period of the lease so as to maintain good appearance and good operating conditions. Five, the applicant shall demonstrate the right to use the pole prior to the special permit being released for recording. Six, pursuant to federal communications system licensing, the applicant is required to ensure that at all times all radio equipment operating at the proposed communication facility results in radio frequency exposure levels compliant with FCC requirements as well as federal and state health standards. An annual statement of this shall be required, this shall be required by June 30th of every year. Seven, all antennas and pertinent equipment not in use for a period of six months or more shall be removed from the replacement pole at the owner's or operator's expense. Eight, replacement pole installation and the installation of the antenna and associated equipment shall not begin prior to 7:00 AM weekdays and 8:00 AM on Saturdays, and shall cease no later than 7:00 PM or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal and federal holidays. Construction includes idling of vehicles, delivery of materials to the location, and all other construction activities. Excavation in the town of Situate right-of-way shall be done according to town standards, and a street opening permit will be required by the DPW. Any damage done to property and installation must be repaired to its original condition. The applicant shall meet all requirements of the Board of Selectmen, Building Department, Board of Health, Department of Public Works, Fire Department, Water Department, Conservation Commission, and other town agencies. The planning board may require an onsite inspection for conformance to the approved plans and these conditions prior to operation of the small cell unit. This special permit shall lapse within two years from the date of its issuance unless substantial use or construction has commenced prior to that time in order, in accordance with M.G., Mass General Law, Chapter 40, A, Section 9. This special permit shall be void if it is not recorded at the Registry of Deeds within 90 days of the date of the filing with the town clerk. The applicant shall provide proof of this recording with the planning board. The planning board reserves the right to review compliance with this special permit at any time. This special permit shall terminate if the use is not in accordance with this decision and its conditions. The applicant shall provide a 14-day notice to the planning board for any proposed upgrades or changes from the small cell antenna system that is approved herein. Such notice shall include a submittal of the impacts and mitigation of those changes, including but not limited to any changes to visual impact of the structure and antenna system as required in accordance with Section 730.4. Such changes can be reviewed and approved by the town planner, or at the discretion of the board, may require a meeting with the board. The applicant shall provide a 48-hour notice of the small cell antenna installation to the planning board office and on their proposed replacement pole.
Just a quick clarification. On number six, where it says, an annual statement shall be required, to who and to where? Is that to the planning board? This shall be required by June 30th of every year?
Yes, to the planning board.
Maybe that should be, I wasn't sure. The other ones were more specific.
To the planning board. All right, I'll entertain a motion as amended.
I move.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next one is 26 Kenilworth Street. Karen, is this-
I just did 26.
Would you just say Kenil-
All right.
32 Harvard Street, is this exactly the same?
It's not exactly, exactly the same. The changes are on finding two, for Harvard Street, the existing pole is in the private way of Harvard Street adjacent to House Number 32. The existing pole is in the residential R3 zoning district. A replacement 40-foot utility pole is currently in place, so two poles exist in this location. So each one of the three, the finding has been changed, so it matches the conditions that exist on the street right now. The Allen Street, the existing pole is in the public right-of-way of Allen Place adjacent to House Number 14. The existing pole is in the business district. And then, in the conditions, it specifies the pole number for each one. Each one of these had a different pole, so Harvard Street is utility pole 245-4 in the private right-of-way adjacent to 32 Harvard Street. So that changes according to the-
So you're saying we need to read them all?
Well, I mean, those are the changes that are, I mean, but each one is basically the same thing, but they have different pole numbers and slightly different finding based on if it's a public right-of-way or a private way.
Because none of us are here other than-
Right.
Could you come back up and, in the findings of fact, say that it's identical to the one previously read with the exception of Item 3, C, and D?
Karen, did you hear that?
Yeah.
No, I didn't see that.
An issue?
Well, on the first one that you just voted on, I don't know if the correct height was stated in the decision. I don't have the entire-
Neither do we.
Decision. But Keith just pointed out to me that the height as shown on the plans that were submitted is 42 feet 8 inches is the top height.
Does that include the wireless?
Yes, that's the top height of the antenna.
And what number was?
38 feet 2 inches.
38 feet 2 inches might be the one for S, just for SC04. That's the one that's 38.2 inches. The one for SC01 and SC02, the top height is 42 feet 8 inches.
All right, did I miss that? Sorry.
So that's Kenilworth and Allen.
Yes. And the pole replacements, they're 45 feet, utility poles, not 40. I think that's the difference between number four as well. That's a 40-foot to be, small cell 01 and small cell 02, they're both 45-feet replacements. The one on four is the 40-feet. So I think the information that was transcribed reflects SC04, but not SC01 and SC02. The antenna heights are a little different for those two.
All right, can we, can we take a five-minute recess?
Go for it.
And, uh-
Thank you.
I move to make the following amendments to the application for the small cell installation at 26 Kenilworth Street. In the findings of fact, Item 7, I'd like to make the following changes. The small cell unit will consist of a 12-inch diameter by 38.7-inch-high cylindrical antenna mounted on a replacement pole with two remote radio heads and associated wires, cables, diplexer, converter, and electrical meter. A replacement 45-foot pole will be installed to hold the small cell antenna. The top of the new utility pole will be 38 feet 6 inches in height, and the small cell antenna will be mounted on top of that for a total height of the replacement pole with the antenna at 42 feet 8 inches. The antenna is less than 10 feet in height and meets the requirements of Section 730.4 and 730.2A of the Situate zoning bylaw. I would also like to amend the motion for the special permit and major site plan review for the same location in Item Number 3. The proposed small cell unit installation includes installing one cylindrical antenna of 12 feet, or sorry, 12-inch diameter by 38.6 inches at a top height of 42 feet 8 inches, two remote radio heads and associated wires, cable, diplexer, converter, and electrical meter to a 38-foot 6-inch tall, as measured from ground level, replacement pole 45 feet long to replace the existing utility pole, as is detailed in the drawings referenced in Item 1 above. That's all of the amendments.
Second amendment is modified.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Move on to-
I move to make the following findings of fact for the small cell antenna attachment adjacent to 14 Allen Place. The findings of fact are similar to the findings for the 26 Kenilworth Street location, except with the following exceptions. The existing pole is in the public right-of-way of Allen Place adjacent to House Number 14. The existing pole is in the business district.
Wait a minute, go back and read number one, too. You're gonna have to read number one.
Oh, sorry.
You're gonna have to read number one.
Okay. On August 15th, 2017, Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless applied for a special permit and major site plan review for installation of a small cell unit on a replacement utility pole number EECO-BRA within the public right-of-way adjacent to 14 Allen Place under Section 730.4 and Section 770 of the Situate zoning bylaw. The public hearing opened on October 12th, 2017, and was continued to October 26th, 2017, November 9th, 2017, December 14th, 2017, and January 11th, 2018. Item number, or finding seven, the small cell unit will consist of a 12-inch diameter by 38.7-inch-high cylindrical antenna mounted on the replacement pole with two remote radio heads and associated wires, cables, diplexer, converter, and electrical meter. A replacement 40-foot pole will be installed to hold the small cell antenna. The top of the new utility pole will be 34 feet in height, and the small cell antenna will be mounted on top of that for a total height of the replacement pole with antenna at 38 feet 2 inches. The antenna is less than 10 feet in height and meets the requirements of Section 730.4 and 730.2A of the Situate zoning bylaw. That's it for the findings of fact.
That's what, Allen Place?
That's for 14 Allen Place.
Move the findings of fact as read for 14 Allen Place.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the special permit and major site plan review for the installation of small cell equipment on a replacement utility pole number EECO-BRA in the right-of-way adjacent to 14 Allen Place with the following conditions. These conditions are the same as the conditions approved for 26 Kenilworth Street pole with the following exceptions. Condition one, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction
Condition one, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall conform to the plans entitled Verizon Site Name Situate Mass SC-04-390216 Pole EE-BRA within public right-of-way adjacent to 14 Allen Place, Situate Mass 02066 Plymouth County Sheets T-1, Z-1, C-1, A-1 Revised dated June 6, 2017 by Krupa Karan Kolan Devalu, Professional Engineer of NB&amp;C Engineering Services LLC of Chelmsford, Mass. Three, the proposed small cell unit installation includes installing one cylindrical antenna of 12-inch diameter by 38.6 inches at a top height of 38 feet 2 inches, two remote radio heads and associated wires, cables, diplexer converter, and electrical meter to a 34-foot tall, as measured from ground level, replacement pole 40 feet long, to replace the existing utility pole, as is detailed in the drawings referenced in Item 1 above.
Ask him, I don't have the decision in front of me.
Was that .7 inches or .6 inches? The first time you said was 38.7 inches. And then your findings?
Oh, for the diameter of the, for the size of the unit?
38.7 inches.
Okay, yep, oh, I'd like to amend that to say 38.7 inches. A cylindrical antenna of 12-inch diameter by 38.7 inches, to reflect the findings of fact.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, I would like to make the following findings of fact for 32 Harvard Street. On August 15th, 2017, Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless applied for a special permit and major site plan review for installation of a small cell unit on a replacement utility pole number 245- or slash 4 within the private right-of-way adjacent to 32 Harvard Street under Sections 730.4 and Section 770 of the Situate zoning bylaw. The public hearing opened on October 12th, 2017, and was continued to October 26th, 2017, November 9th, 2017, December 14th, 2017, and January 11th, 2018. Two, the existing pole is in the private right-of-way of Harvard Street adjacent to House Number 32. The existing pole is in the residential R3 zoning district. A replacement 40-foot utility pole is currently in place, so two poles exist in this location. The subsequent findings are similar to previous findings made for 14 Allen Place and 26 Kenilworth Street, except the following exception. Item seven, the small cell unit will consist of a 12-inch diameter by 38.7-inch-high cylindrical antenna mounted on the replacement pole with two remote radio heads and associated wires, cables, diplexer converter, and electric meter. A replacement 45-foot pole has been installed to hold the small cell antenna. The top of the new utility pole will be 38 feet 6 inches in height, and the small cell antenna will be mounted on top of that for a total height of the replacement pole with antenna at 42 feet 8 inches. The antenna is less than 10 feet in height and meets the requirements of Section 730.4 and 730.2A of the Situate zoning bylaw. And that is the findings of fact.
Moving findings of fact is modified.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the special permit and major site plan review for the installation of small cell equipment on a replacement utility pole number 245/4 in the private right-of-way adjacent to 32 Harvard Street with the following conditions. These conditions are similar to the conditions for previous approvals at 14 Allen Place and 26 Kenilworth Street with the following exceptions. Condition one, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall conform to the plans entitled Verizon Site Name Situate Mass SC-02-385926 Pole VZ Number 245/4 within the private right-of-way adjacent to 32 Harvard Street, Situate Mass 02066 Plymouth County Sheets T-1, Z-1, C-1, A-1 Revised dated June 6, 2017 by Krupa Karan Kolan Devalu, Professional Engineer of NB&amp;C Engineering Services LLC of Chelmsford, Mass. Two, the replacement pole with small cell unit installed shall not exceed the height of 42 feet 8 inches from ground level. The color of the small cell unit antenna shall match the replacement pole. Three, the proposed small cell unit installation includes installing one cylindrical antenna of 12-inch diameter by 38.6 inch at a top height of 42 feet 8 inches.
That one's .7.
Oh, yeah, I see what happened there. Okay, I'll start item three over. The proposed small cell unit installation includes installing one cylindrical antenna of 12-inch diameter by 38.7 inches at a top height of 42 feet 8 inch, two remote radio heads and associated wires, cables, diplexer converter, and electrical meter to a 38-foot 6-inch tall, as measured from ground level, replacement pole 45 feet long, to replace the existing utility pole, as is detailed in the drawings referenced in Item 1 above. And lastly, condition 16, there's an addition of one small piece of language which reads, "The applicant shall provide a 48-hour notice of the small cell antenna installation to the planning board office on the proposed replacement pole."
Second.
I'll say so moved as amended.
So moved as amended.
Second?
Well, I moved.
All right. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are you going back to New Hampshire?
Well, no, I'm not, I'm in Mass. Keith's in there.
Alongside, watch out, ice this weekend.
Yes.
All right, I think that we're all set, and I will entertain Bill's motion.
Thank you again. Thank you. I second that motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Morgan, we're done.